We're going to get started with our council meeting this morning. So, Madam Clerk, if you could start us with a roll call.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Here.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Asparza.
Present.
Councilmember Soria. Councilmember Arias.
Present.
And Council President Brandal.
Here. Next, we're going to have an invocation by Reverend Reagan Baker from the First Congregational Church, and will stand for prayer, and when we're done with the prayer, we'll salute the flag. Reverend?
Good morning, and thank you for the invitation to be here. Would you all please join me in a spirit of prayer? Dear holy and loving God, we thank you this morning for the abundance of life and the gift of living in this city. We thank you also for challenging and meaningful work, in particular, the work of governing this city on behalf of its people. To be given such work is a high task and a unique grace. Today, we pray for each other, for everyone engaged in this work, and in particular, this council. May we learn to see each other with increasing and deepening compassion as we work toward a common good that recognizes that recognizes all of our lives as being caught up and interwoven together. Today, we lift up and pray for a commitment to justice and equality for all, for the ability to disagree with respect and to build more together than we can alone, and always for a mindfulness of those in our communities who struggle to attain just the basics of food and water, clothing and shelter. We lift up today's agenda. Please guide this council's work and decisions to bring about an increasingly just and flourishing Fresno and world. God, from many perspectives and traditions, we pray these things together. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to approve today's agenda. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to today's agenda?
Only two changes, and they're both under ceremonial. The proclamation of Transgender Day of Visibility is being removed from the agenda by staff, and the proclamation for Cesar Chavez Day is we're adding co-sponsor Chavez.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who was the motion made by? Councilman Asparza, second, by Councilman Capriolio. All in favor? All right, and that motion passes 7-0. And now, we have to approve the minutes for the March 7th meeting. Madam Clerk, were there any changes to those minutes?
No changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve from Councilman Capriolio, a second from Councilman Arias. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Now, we have some ceremonial presentations this morning, and the first one is Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board's Fourth Quarter Award Winner, and that's from Councilmember Asparza.
Good morning. Hello, folks. Welcome to City Hall on this beautiful sunny morning. I dare say spring, even though we're not quite there yet. It's my honor today to present this certificate to Maria Sanchez. So, our honoree today is someone who exemplifies both virtue and a very strong work ethic. Maria resides at home with her folks and her four siblings. She grew up under what I would call very difficult circumstances. Her parents struggled to afford housing and often had no electricity. But despite these challenges, Maria made the bold decision to not let them stand in her way, but instead to help lift her family up in these very trying times. Unable to afford post-secondary education, Maria had decided to seek employment, as many of our young folks here in Fresno do. She reached out to the All Youth One system and worked closely with an employment readiness specialist to complete assessments, mock interviews, and various workshops. And after countless hours of hard work and determination, Maria has successfully obtained employment as a clerical assistant with Fresno EOC. That's the Economic Opportunities Commission's, their clerical temp pool, where she will continue to gain valuable work experience along the way. She also plans to register for the 2019 Spring Semester at Fresno City College to continue her education. Go Rams, go Maria. I teach there. And most importantly, you know, the most important thing is that Maria is able to help, provide help for her family whom she loves very much and very dearly. And all I can say is, wow. I think you're an incredible person and inspiring individual, and I know that if you continue on the same path that you're on, no doubt, you are going places. And so, it's my great honor that I present to you today's certificate, signed by all the council members, to recognize your success as the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board's Outstanding Youth Achievement Awardee for the fourth quarter of 2018 or 19? 18, this is coming forward, actually. So, congratulations, Maria.
Thank you.
And before we move on, actually, we have a short video, I believe, to showcase about Maria, a three-minute video.
Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board's Youth Outstanding Achievement Award is presented to a youth that demonstrated a commitment to making changes in their lives and have overcome personal barriers to achieve professional success. The 2018 Fourth Quarter Award is presented to Maria Sanchez.
Prior to enrolling in workforce services, Maria had just recently graduated from high school. She had enrolled into Fresno City College, and she wanted to become a veterinarian. However, her father had just lost his job, and in order to help her family, Maria decided that she wanted to come in and get employment.
When I started the program, the enrollment process, we had to go to workshop. So, I liked the fact that they offered a workshop to us because we got to learn how to accurately fill out a resume, how to dress for an interview, how to answer questions at an interview. These are all things that I had no previous knowledge of. So, when I actually came to my interview, I was incredibly nervous, but I was told that I did really good, which was happy. Like, I was happy to hear that because I honestly thought that I was going to vomit.
She's a bright, shining star of the youth that come into the program, and we've been very impressed with her since day one.
One goal that the program helped me achieve was get rid of my anxiety. I had really bad anxiety starting the program. I couldn't talk to anyone. I definitely could not answer phones. I can be in an elevator now with the person that I completely do not know, and I can ask them freely about their day and keep talking. That is one thing that I amazed myself in, and the program did amaze me because they did push me to get out of my shell, and that's something that I'm really thankful for.
Maria is outstanding because of her determination. She's faced several barriers. She wasn't able to go to school, and none of that stopped her. She continued to work hard. She came in every day. She completed everything that I asked, and just her motivation alone to complete the activities that were required of her was second to none.
I've been working with EOC for about four months now. My job duties as an office assistant include working the phone, a multi-system phone, and tending to the participants' needs. So, when they come in and see a counselor, I have to refer them to the right counselor or having to deal with walk-ins, so people that come to apply to the program. Those are my main jobs. I'm being trained in how to do eligibility and also how to work in work experience, so doing time sheets for some people or sending them to their jobs. As for now, I want to maybe become full-time working here. If totally possible, I'd like to be a full-time office assistant, like to cover the front. I really enjoy what I'm doing.
I think Maria is outstanding because Maria really had a drive to go to work. Her home life, which is not horrible, but because of the financial situations that she faces at home, and her mom has some health issues, they, she really needed to go to work. She had to put school on hold, basically her own life on hold.
The most important thing that I learned about myself is that I can do the things that I thought I couldn't do. Like, I am capable of learning new things, of actually having a task and successfully completing it. I had a lot of doubt in myself, but now I know that I can do these things, and I just have to keep going.
She is a great young adult, and she's going to be successful because I don't think there's anything that's going to be able to stop her.
Congratulations, Maria.
Congratulations, Maria. You want to show off your certificate while all of our sloppy signatures? We're not doctors, but we think we are up here at the City Council. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Soria, if I could ask you to please, hold on one second. I'm going to hijack the floor, Council President, just for a quick second.
Security?
You're going to like this. Your fellows are going to like this. So, I am going to present something with a P, but it's not a proclamation. Does anybody know what today is? Pie Day, yes, okay, I'm not that original. It's 3:14, it's Pie Day. In graduate school, on Pie Day, we would, we'd have faculty and staff make homemade pies. We'd do a whole panel, pie tasting contests, and then there'd be, you know, first, second, third, and honorable mention. And then on top of that, we'd sell the pie campus-wide and make a ton of money. I didn't ask my colleagues to bake pie because I don't think Councilmember Capriolio knows how to turn on a modern oven. But, but I did bring pie for everybody in honor of Pie Day. Showcased the nerd in me and filled everybody with diabetes this morning. So, bring in the pie. And hopefully, I brought enough everybody. Yeah, so there's peach, there's apple, there's cherry, there's banana cream. Not lemon. I couldn't bring it all. I couldn't bring it all. Actually, let's put it more towards the middle. That way, it's a little more accessible to everybody. Counsel, what flavors do you want?
Peach.
Councilmember Brettafield's.
Peach.
Peach for Brandal. Apple.
Any humble pie?
No. None for Councilmember Chavez.
None, none this morning, low carb.
Okay. My doctor told me I got to go low carb on Tuesday, but I, you know.
Banana cream, of course.
Banana cream. Clerk? Okay, counselor? You're good? Okay. All right, city manager? Okay, all right, no one wants, you know, I'll take a few slices of pie for me and my colleagues. But, hey, make sure you guys grab at some of this, please, please. And we've got more in my office where it came from. So, once this is all gone, we'll go refill it and come back. Don't be shy, we have too much. Please take some. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, we are going to serve pie and continue with our next ceremonial. It's a proclamation of Safe Place Week from Councilmember Soria.
Good, so, good morning, everyone. It is my pleasure, and I'm very proud to once again recognize National Safe Place Week, which begins on March 17th and goes through March 23rd. There are a number of people here today. Misty Blanco, she's a Sanctuary Director. Joe Martinez, Outreach Manager. Jennifer Cruz, Sarah Johnston, and then we have Anthony. If you guys want to join me here? So, like I said, it is my pleasure to do this. Once again, I think I've done it probably since I first started as a council member. And I just, every year, I love to recognize the work that is being done, not only recognize National Safe Place Week, but really the work that is being done by the individuals that have joined me here this morning. I really want to commend their hard work and dedication of the Fresno EOC Sanctuary and Youth Services. I actually was a board member some time ago and had the pleasure of serving on the advisory. And so, I love the work that the Sanctuary does and the resources and services that it provides for the young people that need it the most here in our community. In particular, I've had the pleasure of working very closely with Joe and seeing, you know, his unwavering commitment, his passion for the young people, and his passion just for people, period, and really how he has transformed lives of young people throughout the city of Fresno. So, I want to thank you, Joe, for everything that you have done in your, in your time. I know that you've been working now for over 25 years, right? Twenty seven, twenty seven years. I think he has set a record. And, and so, but we are really appreciative of the work that he has done with the Sanctuary and the youth in our community. Just so you guys know, the National Safe Place Week is critical to raise awareness and create partnerships to provide immediate help and safety to teens facing abuse, neglect, bullying, or other crisis situations. The city of Fresno, I will say, I'm proud that we've collaborated to provide these safe place services, which is why our city buses in the city Fresno and park sites are considered safe places and will connect you to the Sanctuary Youth Shelter. I know that if you see the buses, they will have these on them, as well as our community centers and our parks, which is an awesome partnership. Again, we understand the value of collaboration and really the importance that we, that we need to do a lot more work to help our young people in our community. So, I want to encourage folks to spread the word in the city. If you ever find a youth in crisis, to let them know that there are people, like the people that are standing here with me, that care and that there's places that they can go in times of need, and then they will be connected to the appropriate resources. So, again, I just want to thank all of you for the work that you guys do. I will pass on the mic to, maybe I'll kick it off with you. Anthony, are you ready?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, so I'm going to let Anthony, who is one of our Sanctuary youth, that can speak a little bit about his story and how the Sanctuary has been helpful to his situation, and then we'll let one, one or two of you guys represent the EOC Sanctuary.
Good morning, hello. My name is Anthony Bunch. I am 21 years old. I am a Christian that works as a security guard at North Fresno Church, Mema Night Brethren. Here at my church, I make sure that everybody is safe and secure. I got kicked out from my mom and dad's house when I was dealing a lot of stress at 18 years old. I went to a really bad group home, and I decided to leave the group home, which left me homeless again. I gained support from CVRC, which is Central Valley Regional Center. They got me an apartment in Merced, California. Sadly, I got kicked out from that apartment, too, and I was staying at most of the hotels in Merced in Fresno, California. After I ran out of money, I was scared, and I didn't know what to do, and I was going to Exodus Recovery Crisis Unit almost every day. When I heard about the Fresno EOC Sanctuary Transitional Shelter, I was really happy and excited. I felt blessed, and I thought I was getting more support services. The Sanctuary is a safe place because they give food, give me food, shelter, showers, and support, resources, counseling, and case management. It's somewhere where people can stay safe and secure. It's a safe place for where people provide care to those who need it and resources for youth and young adults that are homeless. My future job, I mean, fine, sorry. My future goals is to get a job from Alex and the, the job specialist from EOC Employment and Training Program. And my goal is to get my own individual apartment, become a security guard officer, and attend college. Thank you, guys, for your support and public service to the youth of Fresno. Thank you.
Good morning. I just want to thank Councilmember Soria for supporting this proclamation. You heard Anthony mention he not only is within our transitional shelter, but he's also working with our employment and training. And the recognition just before that in the video, Alex, is who he's working with. So, there's a lot of collaboration within our own agency, but also within the community. And so, we just thank you for your support.
Anthony, we're so proud of you and all the young people whose lives are being impacted. You're right, Councilmember Soria, when you said that. There are literally hundreds and hundreds of young people out on the streets who are homeless and who need these types of services. And fortunately for Anthony, he found us. He represents one of many success stories that do come through our program, and Anthony heard we were coming to City Hall, and he insisted on telling his story to you all. So, Anthony, thank you, we're proud of you. Keep up the good work. This is Monday officially, is Sunday, actually, is the official week for National Safe Place Week. It is a very important program, as well as a time to remember our youth in the community and know that there is a safe place available for our young people to go to. Councilmember, you are correct. You mentioned our parks and our transit services. We have been partners with the city of Fresno for a long time, and without the city's involvement and support, it would be hard for our youth to access a shelter and a safe place. So, thank you, Councilmember Soria. Thank you, councilmembers back there. Save a slice of pie for me. We do want to tell you that we have some other staff here. I have Jennifer Cruz, yeah, Jennifer Cruz, I'm like, okay. And just so that you know, the EOC has launched a new program. It will serve our LGBTQ population, because as you know, there's, there's a void. And this type of center is needed for our population, and so Jennifer will be heading up that effort. We have Sarah Johnston, who's representing our Central Valley Against Human Trafficking. Next week, there is a conference, yeah, on March 27th. I'm not sure if we have any more.
Yeah, we have 10 more spaces.
Yeah, you can sign up and attend the annual conference. 10th year, Sarah?
10th year.
10th year, there you go. And of course, you met Anthony, and Michelle Tuttunjian represents our EOC executive leadership over at Fresno EOC, so thank you all. And of course, you already heard from Misty, Cathy Blanco, she's our Sanctuary Director. So, again, it's a team effort. We're doing this together on behalf of our youth here at Anthony's. So, thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Joe. And Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas March 17th through the 23rd, 2019, this National Safe Place Week and Sanctuary and Youth Services, which is administered by the Fresno Economic Opportunities Commission, will join National Safe Place Network in this national celebration to recognize local businesses, community organizations, youth services agencies, and volunteers that are part of the Safe Place program and work for the safety and well-being of Fresno County's youth. And whereas a safe place is a safe haven for youth in crisis, Sanctuary Safe Place Projects and its networks of over 300 partners sites throughout Fresno County is committed to protecting our nation's most valuable asset, our youth. And whereas Fresno Economic Opportunity Commission Sanctuary Youth Shelter is an emergency shelter for runaway, homeless, or at-risk youth ages 12 through 18, the Sanctuary Youth Shelter is the only self-referral emergency shelter within a 15,000-square-mile radius and is open 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, providing emergency assistance to approximately 300 youth annually. And whereas Fresno Area Express, FACS Transit System has partnered with the Sanctuary Safe Place Sites, FACS provides immediate assistance to young people in crisis by transporting them to Fresno EOC. In addition, Fresno's park sites serve as access points for the youth in need and provides connections to Sanctuary Youth Shelter. And whereas today, more than 370, 215,000 youths have been helped at one of the 20,000 Safe Place locations nationwide or received counseling by phone through Safe Place. Since 1997, Sanctuary has administered the Safe Place program and has provided education and assistance to nearly 250,000 youth and adults. And whereas the National Safe Place Network operates in 38 states and in more than 1,430 communities throughout the United States, including Fresno, California, increased awareness will encourage more communities to establish Safe Place locations where youth can readily access the help they need. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby proclaim the week of March 17th through the 23rd, 2019, to be the National Safe Place Week in the city of Fresno.
Thank you for that. So, I do have one next proclamation.
Yeah, so our next proclamation or our next ceremonial is also from Councilmember Soria in its proclamation of Women's History Month.
So, it is my honor as the only woman on the council to actually represent this proclamation to a number of very passionate women, women that have made history here in the city of Fresno. So, I'm going to invite my special guests. They're the Democratic Women in Action, and we have a number of them. If you guys all want to come on down and join me. We have Anna Ray, who's the president, Gail Gaston, who's the treasurer, Anna Krebs, secretary, Marsha Conant, Teresa Beretta, Judy Len Bell, who are directors. I don't know if Laura's here, I didn't see Laura. Pat Brown, she's founder and past VP. And we also have Barbara Pyle Rogers, who is founder and also past director. Barbara, do you want to come and join us? Okay. So, here's the little proclamation. So, today, I invited the Democratic Women in Action because they really exemplify the courage and that commitment of women throughout history and women here in the city of Fresno that are making change and with their, with their actions have made significant contributions to the city of Fresno and to our community. I will say that I stand on the shoulders of these women that have paved the way for women like myself to enter elected office. Many of them, you know, supported me during my first election many, many years ago, but I want to thank them for the work that they've done. I also want to thank other groups like the Women in Action that we know have been critical so that women have the right to vote and even own property. Because as we know, you know, from our tragic history, women initially did not have these rights. And today, we have the right to, you know, even run for elected office to ensure that we are at those tables where discussions are being had that impact children, families, and women. And our voices need to be heard, which is why I feel such a privilege to be able to represent women here in the city of Fresno. So, as we celebrate Women's History Month, it is also important to acknowledge the work that remains to be done because we all know everything's not perfect, right? We are closer, I think, today to achieving equality, but we still have inequality when it comes to political participation. We still have much work to do when it comes for equal pay, for equal work. And we have challenges when it comes to reproductive rights and women's rights. And so, I want to commend this group for keeping on the fight, for making sure that we're represented in our community and that we have a voice. But what I tell you guys today is that we must continue to fight for equality. We must also recognize that the contributions of women are vital to our local community and to this nation. For those of you guys that don't know, we are definitely a vital source of economic growth. Women are now making up the majority of college campuses. We are doctors, we are scientists, we are lawyers, we're business owners, and we're elected officials. So, today, I say let's celebrate the month of March, Women's History Month, by continuing to commit ourselves to fight for equality and equity in our community. So, I want to thank the ladies here today for all their hard work and would like to give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you so much, City Councilwoman Soria. We are so proud today to accept this. Our club started in 2016 out of the movement for the Hillary campaign here in Fresno. As our club name says, Democratic Women in Action, we work hard to register voters, to address issues, and to get women elected, and especially Democrats. So, we meet on the first Monday of every month at Yosemite Falls Granite Park from 6:00 to 8:00. All is welcome. And again, we'd like to thank City Councilwoman Soria for recognizing us in the city council today.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, if you could please read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas in 1987, Congress approves a resolution proclaiming March to be Women's History Month at the request of History Month at the request of the National Women's History Project. And whereas in the month of March, we celebrate and pay tribute to the remarkable women who paved the way for gender equality and female empowerment, who continue to make lasting change. And whereas the women of history have shown exemplary leadership through the fight for women's suffrage and equal opportunity through abolitionists, impassion, and industrial labor, and civil rights movements. And whereas women of every race and class have made historic contributions to the growth and stability of our nation and continue to play a critical role in our economic, culture, and social spheres. And whereas women constitute 45% of the U.S. labor force and contribute 7.6 trillion to the national GDP annually, and who give their City of Fresno hope for their future as they make up over half of our degree-earning college student population. And whereas this month, we honor and celebrate women of the past, present, and future whose contributions have shaped our city, state, and nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby recognize the generations of powerful and influential women in our nation and do proclaim March 2019 to be Women's History Month in the City of Fresno.
All right, our next ceremonial is proclamation of Cesar Chavez Day, and that's from Councilmember Soria, Vice President Arias, and we added Councilmember Bretafeld. Excuse me, Chavez.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
And the team.
Okay. So, it is an honor to be able to kick off this presentation. And here we have Eddie Valera Valero, who is president of El Concilio, here to be part of the proclamation acceptance. I just want to say, I've been able to do this proclamation now since I've also been here on the council. And as a daughter of farmworker immigrants, it is my just honor to be able to do this every year because I think that it's important that we recognize the legacy that Cesar Chavez has left, the historic accomplishments for our community, but also to highlight, as I mentioned even in my previous presentation, of the work that remains to be done to achieve equality for our farmworkers, for our immigrants here in the City of Fresno and throughout our nation. So, every March 31st, we celebrate the life and work of Cesar Chavez. I think most of us probably know who Cesar Chavez was. Today, I am proud to be joined by my colleagues to present this, to acknowledge the great work that the Concilio of Fresno has been doing, not only this year, but for a number of decades, representing our Latino community here in the City of Fresno, and really keeping the memory alive of Cesar Chavez and his legacy by doing what you guys do every year during your Learning Service Day. And so, it is critical for us to affirm those core values that Cesar Chavez had and continue to push for social justice and equality. I think a couple of the core beliefs that I want to just mention is, one, was service to our community, nonviolence, and respect for fellow brothers and sisters. He was someone that was committed to fight for social justice. And because of the work that they did through the UFW, they were able to accomplish a lot more rights for our farmworkers here in our community. So, I'm proud today to be able to present this proclamation along with my colleagues.
I just want to say, congratulations, Eddie. As a former farmworker myself, thanks to Cesar Chavez, I got to use a long hoe versus a short hoe. So, I'm sure it saved years on my back. But on a serious note, the work that Cesar Chavez did, his legacy continues with our kids today. And this event really allows every student that we have in the city, irrespective of culture and background, ethnicity, to understand the legacy of one person and a movement for our country. And for that, we're deeply appreciated.
I want to echo my colleagues' sentiments, Eddie. Thank you for the work you do. Willie Concilio, you guys have been at it for quite a while. Proud supporter of the event from my years at the school board to now being on the council. We appreciate the work you do. And, you know, when we think of Cesar Chavez, we know that a lot of that work still continues. I remember the stories of, you know, my mother when she came to this country and working in the fields in Bakersfield, Delano. And we know that there's still work that needs to be done on the conditions for the folks that grow and pick our food and make sure that we have meals on our tables every single day. And so, I wanted to thank you for the work that you do. And, you know, we're going to keep supporting it. And when I mean supporting it, we're going to make sure that we're eliminating unnecessary fees, that we make sure that we don't have those obstacles in place, and that we have everything ready for the march and the parade that we have every year. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Soria, gracias. Councilmember Arias, and Luis Chavez, gracias. I want to thank the council, all of you, for your continued support of this great and outstanding signature event that the Concilio is proud to present, especially for the students of the Fresno Unified School District. And I have to compliment our partners, Fresno Unified School District, and especially the Fresno Adult School. I have with me Board Member Willie Lopez, longtime Concilio member and past chair of the Cesar Chavez Planning Committee. This is a signature event that's been in place for the past 19 years. The whole focus of the event is student-based and is to honor the legacy and history of Cesar Chavez and the farmworkers' struggle for social justice. So, thank you, everyone, especially those of you in the audience, and thank again. Gracias.
Very briefly, my name is Willie Lopez. Cesar used to come to my house because my mom would force me to stay there and listen to his advice. She would bring her mijo to talk to Cesar and a bunch of other people. And I was being courteous. And culturally, you know, you have to be polite and mande and all this kind of stuff. But I was not, I was a knucklehead, let's put it that way. I wanted to be with my homeboys over there in Delray, and he would be giving me this advice. And I never realized that this man would someday be honored the way he is. And just recently, I ran into a lady at a meeting. And the meeting was, I was there, and she, we started talking about it. She was from Germany. And she was in San Francisco, but she came to Fresno, and that's where I met her. And she was going to Delano and to La Paz and all these locations where Cesar had left his, you might say, his imprint, including Fresno. I took her to the Cesar Chavez School. She saw the bus and was taking pictures. She was so excited. I didn't realize that he was like a rock star in Europe, in Germany. They studied him. She knew about Dolores Huerta. She knew about so much. And I'm thinking to myself, this man, Cesar Chavez, when I was a knucklehead, I wasn't listening to him and didn't know him everywhere else. And yet, there's people here in Fresno, they don't even know who he is and what he has done. We honor him like Muhammad Gandhi. We honor him like Martin Luther King. And he's our guy. We claim him because, like, you know, but we claim other people who are football stars and all this from Fresno. And Cesar is, I just, I was really happy to have met him personally. And I apologize, Cesar, for being a knucklehead when you were trying to give me advice. But here we are honoring him. Thank you.
Councilmember Espersa just joined us. Did you want to say something?
No more pie. There's plenty left over. No, listen, I think it's no mistake that here in the Central Valley, and on the Fresno State campus in particular, we commemorate his legacy among many other places in California and throughout the nation. So, I think that speaks for itself. And I am also astounded when I come into contact with folks who have not, they don't know who Cesar Chavez was or Dolores Huerta. And we have to educate them, right? We have to put the word out there. It's a big part of California's history and Central Valley history in particular. You know, most of my manual labor days were spent in landscaping rather than the fields. So, you know, as far as having a direct impact on me, it's primarily with my family. My grandparents, my aunts, uncles, grandpa in his 60s, who still labors in the fields from time to time. So, I'm eternally grateful for the folks who stood up decades ago, folks now who are still fighting the good fight for workers' rights, for human dignity.
Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas the Cesar E. Chavez Day of Service and Learning commemorates civil rights activist Cesar E. Chavez, a leader who mobilized thousands of migrant farmworkers to establish the first successful farmworkers' union in the United States. And whereas the Cesar E. Chavez Day of Service and Learning has instilled lifelong skills and learning to students in the Fresno Unified School District for its 19th year. And whereas the Cesar E. Chavez Day of Service and Learning is led by El Concilio de Fresno Incorporated, who alongside with the Fresno Unified School District and the Cesar E. Chavez Adult Learning Center, honored the legacy of Cesar E. Chavez and the farmworkers' struggle for social justice. And whereas the Cesar E. Chavez Day of Service and Learning has continued to engage students in personal development, leadership, and community service activities. And whereas the Cesar E. Chavez Day of Service and Learning is recognized for its consistent implementation of key core values of service to others, sacrifice in social justice in students' lives. And whereas the Cesar E. Chavez Service and Learning is truly an embodiment of the life of Cesar E. Chavez, now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the members of the Fresno City Council, do hereby proclaim the 31st day of March to be Cesar E. Chavez Day of Service and Learning in the City of Fresno.
Our final proclamation of the day is Small Business Development Center Day, and that's from Councilmember Bretafeld.
Hi, come on up. Good morning. We all recognize the importance, obviously, of our economic climate, improving it. And we also know that jobs, creation of jobs, 70% of them happens with small businesses. So, we want to honor today Clovis Community College and their Valley Business Center that they're involved with. And I'm going to let Dr. Bennett talk about what they do there. I want to introduce our Clovis Community College president, Dr. Lori Bennett. And I would like you to talk about exactly what you're doing at Clovis Community College, which is helping so many people in terms of their job expansion with jobs. And I'll let you introduce your other folks. Here you go, Dr. Bennett.
Thank you very much. I'll start by introducing, this is Mr. Rich Mostert, who is our executive director of the SBDC, and Mr. Damon Rapata, who is a Clovis Community College student who works with Rich in the, is setting up our SBDC. Clovis Community College is really honored and proud to be supporting this. And I just want to make that comment again that our name is Clovis, but we are located in the City of Fresno, and we're very proud of this partnership with the city. The Small Business Development Center is important to our region because that connection that you just mentioned about developing jobs and supporting small business owners and people who would like to start small business, it's a key part of the economic growth for this region. And Clovis is so happy to be able to host the SBDC and support the things that it does. And I'm going to pass this to Rich to explain just a little bit about how you're helping the community.
Well, good morning. Thank you. I like that from the back. That's great. Good morning. Again, my name's Rich Mostert. I'm the director of the SBDC. And I do want to point out that Damon is the brains of the outfit. He's the person who keeps me honest as well. The bottom line is, economic development, we all know, is critical to the lifeblood of the Central Valley. And small business development centers play the role of serving the new fledgling and expanding small businesses. We do so by providing no-cost counseling to anybody on any business subject to help them start, grow, or expand their businesses. And we're happy to say that we're on track to make goals this year of serving over 570 businesses within the Central Valley. We're going to have a minimum of 50 business startups this year, help support the job creation of a minimum of 2,000 jobs, and we're going to turn around and bring in about $15 million in capital infusion. The most important thing we need is the continued support of all of our partners throughout the Central Valley and the awareness. Let people know that if they need to help with their businesses, that's what we're here for. And we do cover four counties. We are located at the generosity of our host at Clovis Community College at the Herndon Campus on Herndon and Peach. However, we serve Fresno, Madera, Tulare, and Kings Counties.
And while we love the big names of Amazon and Ulta and the Gap, they all start out small. And the backbone of our economic engine is small business. That's what keeps jobs coming. That's what keeps most people employed. And so, we have to continue to facilitate their growth. And you do that, and you do a great job at it. So, can I ask the city clerk, please, to read the proclamation?
Whereas on Wednesday, March 20th, 2019, we would like to recognize the Valley Small Business Development Center, SBDC, hosted by Clovis Community College on the occasion of National Small Business Development Center Day. And whereas the Valley Community SBDC continues to demonstrate hard work and commitment and serves as a nationwide leader in job creation and small business growth. And whereas the Valley Community SBDC promotes the development, growth, and success of small businesses and inspiring entrepreneurs throughout Fresno, Tulare, Madera, and Kings County. And whereas the Valley Community SBDC works to launch growth, transition, and innovate businesses, and provide expert consulting, training, market research, access to capital, and other tools at no, excuse me, at low to no-cost assistance. And whereas the Valley Community SBDC is a part of the Central California SBDC Network, which since 2003 has assisted thousands of companies from startups to established firms, helped create and retain over 10,000 jobs, and created more than $435 million in loans and equity. Therefore, be it resolved that on this day, the mayor and council members of the City of Fresno wish the Valley Community SBDC, on this National SBDC Day, continued success in the future by declaring March 14th, 2019, to be Small Business Development Center Day in the City of Fresno.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Council President, we have one more presentation that we need your participation in. So, if you could come down for a moment?
Does it involve more pie?
Come on, come on. Come on down. No more pie. We get the rest of the council members to come and join us for this impromptu presentation to our outgoing colleague. So, Council President Brandell, this is officially to present you with your eviction notice from the City Hall Chambers. It's an official notice that was drafted this morning and signed by your six colleagues. And in part, it reads, "Effective by the end of the week, you have been noticed to leave the premises. You must peacefully vacate the premises and remove all your personal property on or before the date indicated on this notice. If you fail to quit or deliver possession, legal proceedings will be instituted against you to obtain our property back." So, on behalf of your colleagues, congratulations, and don't let the door hit you.
Are we at that stage? Thank you. Are we at that stage where there's a couple sheriffs waiting to come get involved? Right.
Officially, you'll have to the end of 5 o'clock tomorrow before the sheriffs show up.
All right, let's do this.
It's a unanimous decision by this very politicized council. It's a unanimous decision by this very politicized council. Come by my office for a good advice, a piece of pie.
All right. Perfect. All right. That's perfect. All right, now we are on to council member reports and comments. And opportunity, Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take a moment to remind everyone that Granville Homes will be kicking off their Home of Hope, Home of Hope Event. The home is located in District 4 of the Belterra Community. This is a fantastic community. Parks are there, lots of rooms, spacious, well-designed, very well-designed. So please stop by to tour the house this Saturday, March 16, from 9:30 to 5:00 p.m. And tickets are on sale now for the drawing for this beautiful home built by Granville. And some of the great beneficiaries of the proceeds, the proceeds go to local charities, is our own Fresno Police Chaplaincy Program, which has been very helpful to me and all of us on the dais, especially with Operation Gobble and the other nonprofit events we've had. So please support Home of Hope, and when you get a chance to thank Granville for their participation in our community in donating this beautiful home. And by the way, Go Dogs tournament starts for the Mountain West. Thank you.
Councilman Chavez.
Thank you, President Brandell. Just wanted to very briefly thank our Officer Beckwith and Officer Miller. Councilmember Arias and myself had a chance to tour with our Homeless Task Force this past week. We toured some sites in Districts 3, 5, and 7, and I just wanted to say thank you to the crews out there that are, you know, street sanitation, nonprofit organizations, and we had eight speech from the mayor's office kind of guide the tour, and that was actually very educational and helpful. So just wanted to say thank you to our Homeless Task Force that is working to clean up neighborhoods every day.
Councilmember Sparza.
Yes, a few things, a few updates about my week. Started off the week, this past Monday, with our first meeting of the Finance and Audit Committee. It was regarding parking audit, and we're going to actually get into that and the whole agenda here today, so I won't go too much into detail. Well, had the privilege of going to the Fresno Chamber of Commerce yesterday to their Government Affairs Council meeting and providing a city council update, kind of letting them know what we've been up to here since the beginning of 2019, and what is possibly forthcoming as well. And last but not least, tomorrow I will be participating in the UCSF residency match day. It's match day across the nation, and looking forward to seeing where some of our local folks land as far as their residency goes.
Any other council members have comments today? All right, then, I've got a comment. I know that some of my colleagues up here are interested in soccer for a lot of different reasons. I know, I know Councilmember Soria for sure, and I think several other council members, and Gary, I know you think it's that thing some people do in Europe. Okay. But I did want to, everybody that served with me for a number of years knows that every October, we have a great soccer event, and actually, it's about children. It's held at Chick-Chancy Park. It's called Make a Difference Day. I actually took it over from Councilmember Blongeong, who created it, and we serve thousands and thousands of our residents that bring their kids to play soccer in a stadium atmosphere, and we feed them, give them water, snacks, we provide the whole scene for them. It's a fantastic day, and I'm going to hope that it would continue. It would take the leadership of a council member and a council office to get it done. But even down the street at the county, my staff, myself and my staff will be available for the first year to help work you through that and give you all of our contacts and make every effort to continue that item. Make it a six... Okay.
Councilmember Arias and I would...
Fantastic. Thank you very much. And Lindsey Robert and I will help you, and we'll make sure, and we'll be there volunteering.
His office will be the lead, I'll just support.
Well, that's what I really wanted. Thank you for responding so quickly. All right, that's good news. We are going to move then to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, are there, or no, I don't need to ask you that. Councilmembers, are there any items that you need to be pulled from the consent calendar?
Council President, pull item 1A, please.
Item 1A. Any others? You also want to, all right. So we're going to pull that for discussion after we pass the rest of the consent calendar. So I'm going to ask the public, if there's any member of the public that would like to address any of the remaining items on the consent calendar, have an opportunity to do that right now?
Motion to approve.
I've got a motion to approve from Councilman Capriolio, a second from Councilmember Soria. We have no public comment, all in favor? Aye. That passes, and now we're going to go to item 1A, which was pulled. And item 1A is a resolution, a repeating resolution clarifying procedures for retention and production of public records contained in electronic media. Councilmember Sparza.
Morning, Council. Brian Horns, Chief Information Officer, to answer your questions.
Hey, good morning. To be transparent, I'm probably going to want to table this, but I do want to at least start the conversation here.
Sure.
We can meet coming up this week. But I wanted to see if you could provide some clarification on the language regarding destroying emails after 30 days. Who does that apply to?
Everybody, everybody in the city, all staff, elected officials, attorneys, city clerk. After 30 days in your inbox, anything you delete will go away after 30 days.
Completely.
Completely. That's just deleted. So anything else in your inbox will be there for seven years.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay, yeah, so I'll definitely want to table this, and I think in the name of transparency, yeah, if my colleagues are okay with that.
I'd like to actually have further discussion about it, and so I would be okay with tabling it. I think that we need to have a broader conversation about record retention, and this should be part of it. I don't know what the standards are typically for municipalities. I'd like to have a comparison maybe of what other big cities do when it comes to email retention, because I would like to be, make sure that we're kind of consistent with what other municipalities are doing in this day and age.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you. From my perspective, this is a much broader conversation, also has to do with the pending solution on making police records public. So I'd like for this conversation to be presented by legal counsel and give us a full scope of how we handle records in the city, both electronic, paper, and the video productions that now we're requiring the law to provide. So that's what I'm looking for, a much broader, comprehensive presentation on citywide policies. And frankly speaking, on our ability to respond to public records in a timely manner, and what adjustments we have to make internally, or what capacity we have to add to be able to be more responsive.
I would, I would suggest, then, that what we do is maybe we partner with the attorney's office and bring a workshop back in the next month. You know, best practices, we can look at our other sister cities, you know, our transparency cities, if you will. So if that's okay with you all, we're happy to do that.
That's absolutely perfect. And since we have you on the podium, can you get our faster internet speed going?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Internet speed here is extremely slow.
And the firewalls that also prohibit us when we're doing like Google searches. My staff has a very hard time, and we still haven't resolved that. I couldn't even access Pressy. I was trying to do a presentation for a public event that I was gonna, for a talk that I gave, I had to use PowerPoint. But in this day and age, I'd like to be able to access other tools.
We will work with your office.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if you could help, Councilmember Capriolio find the on button on his computer, and learn how to use PowerPoint. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So we'll have the city manager's office connect with the city attorney's office, do a workshop, and bring this back for a vote. Since we're not voting for it today, we won't go out to the public, but the public will have an opportunity to weigh in when we actually vote on this next month. All right, that concludes the consent calendar. Now we are going to go on to our 10:00 AM scheduled item, and that is an item that we continued from last week. It's considered annexation application.
Good morning, Council President, council members. I'm Israel Trejo with the Development Resource Management Department. So staff provided an addendum to last week's staff report. I'm hoping you all have that. Essentially what that is, is it's a summary of a meeting that staff held with a couple council members, the project applicant, as well as representatives of an adjacent property.
For the record, I don't have a copy of that addendum. When was that provided?
Continue with, you can continue with the presentation.
Okay, thank you. So staff has discussed, you know, the findings of that meeting, and we have contacted the representatives of the church. And so we have provided a letter, which I believe the representatives of the church are in agreement with, and I'd like to make that a matter of record, so if I can hand this to someone either now or after the meeting. But I'd like to make this letter that I provided the representatives of the church a matter of record. Just one additional piece of information that wasn't provided last week at the...
Can you summarize that kind of for the record? What were those points, so that folks know?
Sure. So there were three...
I think that record, that letter is fairly short, is it not?
It's maybe, maybe a page.
Okay. Let's summarize it so that it gets officially into the record, then. That's a good option.
Sure. So basically, it discusses three items, connections to sewer, connections to water, and trash pickup. So connections to sewer, there would be no sewer requirement to connect to the sewer since there are no mains in front of the property. So that's, that's in the letter. The water requirements, the church would be allowed to keep their existing well, and since there is no main in front of the property, if that existing well were to break, they can build a new well, since there is no main in front of the property. And then regarding trash service, they can keep their existing trash service for five years, upon which after that, they'd be required to have city service. So that's, that's a summary of that letter, and I believe the representatives of the church are in agreement with that. Just quickly, one additional piece of information that I didn't provide last week. So the DARM department is in the process of creating a west area specific plan. The steering committee of said plan has recommended lower densities for property west of Grantland Avenue, which this property is. And so what's shown on the preliminary plans for the west area specific plan is medium density, and which matches what's being proposed with this project. And you'll see the west area specific plan in the spring of next year. No additional information. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we are open to questions here, but before we do this, this was something that's, that Councilmember Soria and I met with yourself, planning members of the church that's affected yesterday, and that's why, Council, we received the supplemental. It really came from a demand that Councilmember Soria and I had to make sure that the church was satisfied. So I know this is a little bit out of the ordinary, but I'd like to ask the church up, outside of public comment, but to be official part, I'd like to get their thoughts about the letter, their thoughts about the supplement. And so they just received the supplement 20 minutes ago, when I handed it to them. So we're going to kind of do a little, little bit out of the ordinary, but I'd like the church to come up now and...
Jackie Dugan, God's Family Church. We just got the supplement, of course, late last night. We got it and reviewed it with our board, and the one that you actually currently have is not the one that's acceptable by the church, because it does have some verbiage in there that would, the one he explained is proper, but the one that you have is not right. It has some verbiage in there that states that upon annexation, that we would, we would not have the ability to work our well and fix our well, the way it's worded in the supplemental one that you have that I'm holding, that's stamped by you guys. So it is a, it is still our concern that until you receive the proper supplemental information, and it is dated like it should be and put into record like it should be, that we are not in agreeance with that until that can be done, because I don't know, I mean, we just don't want to, the word upon annexation in the original one, when it goes to the water, it says existing wells, you know, can't be fixed, the way it's originally written, which is the supplemental that you have. It states that we can't fix our current well, because it doesn't address the fact that there is no water in front of the church yet, in front of the church building. They were very specific with the sewer one, to line item that, that there is, there's currently no sewer line in front of it, so we can keep our stuff. But in the water one, on the first, the supplemental that you have, it does not state that. It just says upon annexation, basically, if something goes wrong with our well, we have to correct it. So I would, our request is, is that until you get a proper supplemental that can be put into the books, that this not go forward, because we're not in agreeance with that.
All right, thank you. Just a second. City Attorney, can we make changes to the supplemental here? Can we change that supplemental here?
Council President, if I may, we literally got this half an hour ago. We, I haven't read it thoroughly. I don't understand the implications of it. It's a significant policy decision, and for us as a body, I don't want to do this on the fly. I'd rather this be sent to the legal counsel's office and brought back next week, where we all have enough time to read the documents and the agreements that have been made and how they're interpreted by each party. So it just seems very hurried, and I'm not comfortable signing off on something that I got half an hour ago.
Okay, that's a good...
I think we would like some time to review it, too.
Okay. So I'm going to go back over to Mike in DARM. Let me ask him that.
Yes, that's what I know.
Mike, is there anything about this that needs to be decided today?
We do have the matter that's scheduled, if the council takes action today, the matter will go forward to law school for a final approval on the annexation. So if the council chooses to delay it another week, it'll just be put off another week.
Okay. I think we're going to have to delay it another week, but I want the public to know. So thank you, Mike, and thank you, ma'am, Jackie. So I want the public to know that the supplemental, the lateness of the supplemental is really due because myself and Councilmember Soria really felt like we needed to demand that it was included in the record, so that the church could have some security moving forward with their own plans for their church and their parish lineage. So since it's not time, super time-sensitive, we're going to postpone it once again until next week, and then I'm going to make a strong suggestion that DARM work with the church to get the wording exact. I bet if we spent the time, and Councilmember Arias, I really understand what you're saying, if we spent the time, DARM is probably saying that it's answered correctly, and the church probably has their own interpretation of the words. I think we just need to spend a little bit extra time to get everybody to really agree to the definitions. So I don't think there's anybody here at fault, but we do honor the church, starting last Thursday. They've got, this is a big thing for them, and so I think it's only right for us as a body to give them another week to make sure the wording is correct.
Council President, can I just add one thing? Because I know that this was discussed in our meeting yesterday, to make sure that the staff report, since we have time now, that the staff report actually reflects the changes that are being recorded in the letter. So I'd ask staff to, to make sure we do that, and that we do, because legal counsel has not seen the letter, to make sure that we sit down with legal counsel to make sure that we are fully aware of any implication.
Okay, so why don't you and I call another meeting early next week and make sure that that's all corrected?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we will not be voting on that today, and we'll move on to the next item.
And Council President, my only request as a colleague is that when you guys meet, whatever comes out of that conversation, you give it to the rest of the council for an advantage. an advance, as possible.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. No, for sure. Now, we cannot go to the 10:30 AM item yet, so we are going to skip to general admin, and then we'll come back to the 10:30 in 12 or 15 minutes.
Council President, the prior item, it'd be the same time next week?
Yes, same time next week.
Okay. Thank you.
The 3A item is an award of general, or construction contract, to Dawson Malden, in the amount not to exceed $744,000, to construct well improvements at pump station 210A.
Good morning, Council President, Council. Dan Povich, Department of Public Utilities. This item is to award construction of pump station 210A to Dawson Malden, LLC, in the amount not to exceed $744,725, for a well site at 4104 North Route Avenue. We're available for questions and comments.
Thank you, Dan. All right. Thank you, Dan. We will go out to the public. No council members are punched up yet, so we'll go out to the public real quick. If you'd like to take a seat. Any members of the public like to address this pump station project? I don't see any, so we'll come back up. Councilmember Soria, this is in your district.
Yeah, I just have one quick question regarding the amount. So, if we look at the bids, there's a spread between the lowest bid, which is what we're awarding today, and is $744,000, to about $1.2 million. Do you guys feel pretty comfortable that the lowest bid is the best way to go, and that we will not come back with change orders as a result of the lowest bid?
We feel that it is the appropriate amount.
What was the budget that you guys had set when you guys kind of put this out? What were you guys looking at?
The budget was about $800,000, and it is more expensive than other wells, because it has extensive electrical work and off-site improvements as well.
But you guys feel that the 744, they should be able to do that, just because of kind of the spread, you know, going from 740 to 1.2 is kind of significant? So, I just want to make sure that they don't come back to us and say, "Hey, we're going to need a change order, and we need to come back for more money."
We don't expect that.
Okay. Perfect. So, with that, I'll make a motion. Thank you.
We have a motion from Councilmember Soria, and the second came from Councilman Chavez. Screen is clear. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. The next item, 3B, is approve of revised spending plan for City of Fresno's homeless emergency aid program, known as HEEP, and that's from the mayor's office.
Council President, Council members, it's been a delight to work with your subcommittee of Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember Arias, and Councilmember Brettafeld. That subcommittee, along with the mayor's office, is presenting this revised spending plan for the Fresno, City of Fresno's homeless emergency aid program dollars, in the amount of $3,105,519.90, that's been awarded by the State of California to Fresno. These funds need to be spent by June 30th of 2021. These expenditures will, you have as an attachment to your council item, the spending plan. These expenditures will require an RFP process that provides service providers the opportunity to present proposals in five service areas. Those areas are triage center, outreach, homeless employment program, homeless family services, and homeless youth services. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, H. So, we will make you available if we have any questions. I'm going to go out to the public real quick, then come back up to council. Any members of the public like to address this HEEP funding proposal? All right. I don't see any. Councilmember Esparza.
H, I just have one, one question. An attachment A under the outreach section.
Yes.
Can you clarify what we mean when we say recalibration of the hero team? What are you referring to there?
So, thanks for that great question. What this is allowing us to do, these funds allow us to jumpstart a program of really beefing up our community's response to homelessness. And key to that is adding augmentations, one of the most important of which are triage centers. So, triage centers are low-barrier shelters that will actually give folks on the street a place to go. Right now, what's happening is our homeless task force with the police department is basically just repositioning folks all over the city. The hero team works with the homeless task force and others to get folks into services, but the recalibration comes in recalibrating the hero team to becoming a homeless outreach team, the hot team, that focuses on not just getting homeless people into services, but specifically getting out of encampments into triage centers, and making that critical link.
Is that it, Councilmember Esparza? Councilmember Arias?
H, thanks for working with the committee on this updated proposal. Can you, for the record, remind my colleagues, historically speaking, if it wasn't for these funds, how much money would we be investing in triage or outreach for homeless? Would it be limited to the CDBG funds?
Yes. We wouldn't be investing any money in triage, because the, triage is, is basically $20,000 a year per bed.
That's fair to say that this investment's a record investment on behalf of the city in the area of triage and even outreach, right?
Right.
For homeless?
Yeah.
So, thank you for that. And colleagues, this should allow us to relieve some pressure from the CDBG funds that were being proposed to be used for this purpose. So, I'm glad that the state has given us significant dollars to make this investment, allowing us to use CDBG funds in a different way. But thank you again for the time.
Yeah, you bet. And just a note to Councilmember Soria, you had requested that funds be, that, three things. One is that youth funds be augmented, which is done here, that a portion of the outreach funds go towards mitigation by hiring homeless folk, so that's in here, and then also family services, so that's in here. So, we're working with city purchasing to develop RFPs in all those areas.
And actually, Councilmember Soria, you're punched up next.
Yeah. And so, I want to thank you, H, for giving that brief summary of some of the requests that I had made initially when this came forward. And so, I'm delighted to see that you guys have been able to work that in and prioritize it as part of this project. So, just, you know, excited to be able to support that. The only thing that I wanted to mention, because I know that there's been some talk about it, when we, when we're looking at triage centers, I know other communities have done, like, tiny home villages, where maybe it doesn't have like the typical look of a shelter, a low-barrier shelter, but it can essentially be. Are those, are those things that we're kind of encouraging folks to think creatively about how they create these triage centers, to make sure that we're providing the, you know, the low-barrier housing for individuals in our community?
Right now, what we're doing is, because these funds are temporary and they're limited, what we're doing is, we are, both the COC, which has 9.5 million, and our funds are looking for organizations that are able to bring existing structures to the table. But, and we actually have in our community a tiny home village. It's the Eco Village that Art Dyson and others are part of. I've visited those tiny home villages in different places. One of the, one of the worst experiences I've had in my life is, it was visiting a place called Dignity Village in Portland, which was a tiny home village. I would probably, probably more aptly be titled Indignity Village, because it was, the difficulty in situations like that is maintaining habitability, power, lavatory facilities, cooking facilities. So, we're really looking at these triage centers as providing high-level habitability, but also a throughput exits to housing, so that we can actually see a gradual reduction over the next three years in numbers of street homelessness, because people are moving through the shelters in 90 to 120 days, and into other housing options.
And I'm very familiar with Dakota Eco Garden, because it is in my district. I think that, you know, they've done a good enough job with the limited resources. They depend all on, you know, private donations, because they're a nonprofit. But I think that had they, if they are a potential eligible participant for these dollars, I could see that they could make something work, not just a typical shelter, but just, you know, also transitionary triage center kind of style, just in a different type of model. That's all I'm saying.
Yep.
So, thank you for, for that. The last thing, just for the clerk, for the record. So, in going through the documents on this item, there is a letter, supplemental letter attached, there's two. I don't think it belongs there. There, it's a valid caregiver letter that is dealing with CDBG, so I would suggest you guys strike that from the record, and bring it forward when we do have the CDBG items come forward in the future months. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
I think the only other footnote that I would say is that the subcommittee that works so well together is an ad hoc subcommittee. And going forward, we don't see there being, this, this being the last infusion of homeless resources. And so, it may be something that the council would want to consider in terms of a long-term structuring, a homeless subcommittee, or something like that, that would be a part of the long-term strategic planning by the city to invest future resources in this, in these ways. Thank you.
Thank you, H. Councilman Chavez.
Motion to approve.
So, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Chavez, a second from Councilmember Arias. The screen is clear. I already went to the public, yeah. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. All right. Now, we are going to go back to the 10:30 item. And that's approving the installation of the Fresno Veterans Memorial on the south lawn, adjacent to the flagpoles in front of City Hall. The memorial is dedicated to the veterans of Fresno who sacrificed their lives and service to our country during war. It is subject to the mayor's veto. It is sponsored by Councilmember Brettafeld, the mayor's office, and Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Soria and the mayor for cosponsoring this. It has made the world the difference in terms of making sure this gets accomplished with their cosponsoring this. You know, this, this came about when, actually, in November 2017, we had brought forward the touring memorial, remembering the fallen. And some of you may have gone downstairs where, where that was. It was on display with pictures and letters of California veterans that had lost their lives in war. And we intend on bringing it back this year. It's a, it was a very moving display, and it really got me thinking about how we can honor our veterans. And I see the mayor is here, so I know the mayor will, will speak. It got me thinking about how we, as a City of Fresno, can honor our City of Fresno veterans who gave the ultimate sacrifice, so that every Thursday, we're here debating and discussing policies. Because the fact is, as, as we said the other day, when we, we announced this, there isn't any freedom, no freedom, of freedom of the press, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, our Second Amendment rights, nothing. There's nothing that we don't enjoy, that isn't the direct result of the sacrifice of men and women who put on that uniform, and of course, those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Now, I served in the Navy. It's one of the proudest things I've ever done. I've worked at the VA for 27 years, working with veterans who have sacrificed tremendously on our behalf. And I love veterans, and I know everyone up here does as well. And so, I wanted to find a way to honor our veterans. I talked to many veterans. We went to the Clovis Veterans Memorial District, and they have fantastic memorials honoring our veterans. And got the notion of bringing forward a memorial for those who also sacrificed on our behalf. And we did research. We found that there were 277 City of Fresno veterans from World War I up into our current wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, who gave the ultimate sacrifice. And we, we researched this through the National Archives, and cross-referenced it with other websites and projects, and got those names. And as you can see on the overhead, this is what we were able to come up with and design. We had the help of SW Parra, who did the graphic design. He's the gentleman who does a lot of the Fresno B drawings. Is he here, Mr. Parra? There he is. So, he did these renderings. And this, this memorial will be made of black granite. It will have 15-inch ceramic-colored City of Fresno logo at the top. It will have five 10-inch ceramic color tiles for all the branches of the military. It will be absolutely phenomenal, and I think something that we can all be proud of. The location will be by the flagpoles, representing, you know, our, the flags of our country, our state, our city. And it will cost approximately $70,000 for the granite, probably $60,000 for the rest of the work. And we're going to be seeking public, private funding, and hopefully raise all of the money from there. But we're going to have our city staff involved, and the mayor's support and staff, and Councilmember Esmeralda Soria. We've discussed ways we're going to seek the private support, and hopefully raise that. So, it's just, just something that I'm very proud of, and something that I'm really looking forward to. And I think all of us on the council hopefully will support it, and I think we can all be very proud when we unveil this. And it's my hope that we will do this around or before Veterans Day. So, with that, I would like to make the motion to pass the resolution, and ask Esmer, Councilmember Soria, and as well as the mayor to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafeld. I will keep my remarks very short, but I'm also very proud and just honored to be able to be a cosponsor of this item. I think that this is a great example of our city, our council, and the administration demonstrating that we honor and value the sacrifices of those that have fallen, and that have given a lot to not only our city, but our country. And so, I just want to thank, for those folks that are veterans that are in the room, thank you for your service. And I'm just excited about being able to showcase this great monument memorial here in the City of Fresno, and happy to work with my council colleague to be able to raise these dollars privately, to make this a reality this year. And so, I want to thank everyone that has been involved, folks that have, I know your staff has worked tremendously on compiling all the information. I want to thank them personally for all the work that they've put in, and those folks that have donated their time to put the renderings together. Thank you. It is a labor of love, and we appreciate our veteran community here in the City of Fresno.
And mayor, if you'd like, and also wanted to point out, we plan on having in the concrete before the memorial, all of the people who support this have moved this forward, the council, mayor, staff, the private donations, to recognize them in a stamped concrete before the memorial. Of course, it's, it's all about the memorial, but it's not going to happen without the support of a lot of people, and we want to recognize that. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. I am proud and honored to be a cosponsor with Councilmembers Brettafeld and Soria. Altogether, proper and fitting that we honor our veterans, like you said, going back to World War I. I served in the California Air Guard from 1967 to 1973. Never had to go to Vietnam, but I had friends who did go there, some never came back. And this past year, when I was in the mayor's conference, I took the time to do the entire tour of the World War II memorial, Korean War, and the Vietnam War. And I can tell you, those symbols, particularly the Vietnam War wall, is powerful when you see those names up there. is powerful when you see those names up there. And those names belong to people that lived and died for our country. So, again, absolutely proud to be a supporter and urge the council to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to go out to the public in a minute, but first, we have some other council members punched up. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Brandell. Thank you, Councilmember Brettafeld, for taking your leadership on this, and Councilmember Soria and the mayor. And thank you, Mike, for the work you do over there at the museum. Have the, I think, is it the biggest Legion of Valor organization? We have it there at the museum, right? Is that the statistic?
Come on up, Mike. Mike, Mike, come on up.
We can hear him. He's got a pretty deep voice.
Legion of Valor technically is a fraternal organization. That's a national organization from all corners of the country. And the Legion of Valor is comprised of those individuals that have won the Medal of Honor, that's presented by the President of the United States, and the Distinguished Service Crosses, the highest two awards that our country makes available to our service personnel. Our museum, the Veterans Memorial Museum, is the home base here in Fresno, California for that organization. We have their archives, their records, their accomplishments on file in an archives there, where no other place in the country has a collection such as this. It's a true treasure. And it came about by our museum founder, Mr. Chuck Mundjes, who was a member of the Legion of Valor, who worked with the council and then Mayor Patterson to create this museum. And we are a national facility and a great prize to the city of Fresno.
Thank you for that, Mike. And I wanted to just kind of get that on the record. I know we've had a number of conversations, I think, and are hopeful that the next step for this body, working with the mayor, is that we really look at forming our own veterans' district here in the city of Fresno to support that. We know that that's a great treasure that we have here in our city. We know that it needs a lot of work, particularly with the building, the facilities. But I think you'll have that will on this, with this body and working with the mayor on looking at that and making sure that that happens in the city of Fresno. So, thank you for the work that you do. We appreciate it. I'd definitely be voting yes today.
If I could make just one last comment, you know, I certainly encourage the passage of this measure to build this monument. A platoon sergeant told me once, many years ago, in life, it's like a race. There are plowhorses and there's racehorses. As far as I'm concerned, if this council should pass this, you folks are the racehorses.
Thank you, Mike. Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations to all of you that have participated in this fantastic idea and motion today. Well done, well received. I would just suggest that in the future, maybe we could expand the wall to all veterans. I know my, many of you are aware that my father served in World War II in the United States Navy. My brother served with the United States Marine Corps in Vietnam. They did not die in battle, but they gave their hearts and soul to our country and to their branch of service. So, it'd be wonderful to see that monument expand to include all servicemen and women who served our great country. Thank you.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Council President Brandell. Thank you, Mike, for the tour of the Veterans Memorial Hall. I just want to remind our council colleagues that that is the original Veterans Memorial for our city. It was built as a way to remember all veterans. It has been sustained by our veterans volunteers for years now, with very little to no city support. And the building is in disrepair, to be frank. It requires millions of dollars of improvements. In my view, it is a, it's a shameful example of how our generation of leaders have not cared for the greatest generation's investment in our communities and in our veterans. So, for me, supporting one more monument without having a plan that's approved by this body to fix our existing monument is, it's a proposal that simply makes us feel better without really tackling the big problem in front of us. So, council colleagues, what I would ask is that before this monument is completed, and before we celebrate the ribbon cutting, and we take our photos and congratulate each other on it, that we have a plan for a veterans' district, that we have a plan that outlines specifically how we're going to fix Veterans Memorial Hall, and that that plan is approved by this body. Anything short of that is simply just a symbolic gesture to our veterans and our community, that I don't think it's good enough for us here. And I know Councilmember Capriolio, Chavez, Mike, the mayor, and others have been working on, through the details of a veterans' district, as a possibility to generate that, those resources. But I think we have to bring that proposal to closure and have this body approve it and move it forward prior to this, you know, project being completed. Because if we don't, if we do not give ourselves deadlines, we're going to kick the can to the next council and to the next mayor and to the next group of veterans. And I think that's a disservice to all of us. So, my hope, colleagues, is that before we complete the construction of this memorial, before we celebrate its opening, that we would have already approved a plan for a veterans' memorial district to secure the future of that facility. Because that facility has a lot of potential. It's been carried by our veteran volunteers. And I think they've done a valor job thus far, and I think it's time for the rest of the residents of the city to step forward and help with that process.
Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. So, I want to thank my colleagues, both Councilmember Arias and Councilmember Chavez, for their comments and really for highlighting what is a need that we have in the city of Fresno. And I think that it is perfect timing because over the next few months, our administration will be presenting a budget to us. And I think that that's where we can begin to demonstrate that we're willing to tackle this issue. We may not be able to put all the money in the budget this year, but I think that there is an opportunity there. And so, I'm fully supportive. I think that there are seven months, I just counted, seven months before we would potentially, or about six months before we would unveil the final construction of the memorial. And I think that that's a good goal to have. And I would be extremely supportive of figuring out what is the plan to move forward, to make sure that we are restoring and fixing, you know, a great Veterans Memorial Hall that we have here, just a block away. So, I want to, again, thank you guys for the work that you guys have done to make sure that at least, at minimum, is maintained the way it is today. So, thank you.
Yeah. Councilman Capriolio.
I was just, I'm not familiar with all the TCC funds. Other than that, it's a seventy million dollar state grant. And it's a shame we can't take some of that money and invest it in that facility, or other state money that might be available to veterans. So, I would urge all of us to contact our leaders in Sacramento and start maybe a movement from the top to us, the people on the streets of Fresno. And that might help facilitate the funding for this fantastic project. So, it's just an idea, or I don't know if we could scrape out some of the TCC money, or there seems to be lots of grants floating around downtown, and perhaps those can be directed toward this fantastic project and things you've been doing for many, many years. I personally enjoyed that museum and toured it a few times. And I enjoyed Judge Creed's handmade spoon from his days as a POW. And all the Congressional Medal of Honor winners that are listed there, it's fantastic. I would urge everyone to enjoy that museum. Come down and see the history that we've developed here in Fresno. It's fantastic. So, congratulations and thank you.
Councilmember Brettafeld, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I did, to approve the resolution. And Esmeralda, Councilmember Soria, a second to it.
Yeah, okay. A second by Councilmember Soria. I'm going to go out to the public. I've got a comment I'm going to make, once we hear from the public. Any member of the public will have three minutes to address this item. It has to be on the topic of this Veterans Memorial. So, if anybody from the public would like to take their three minutes, now's your opportunity.
Good morning. My name is Minerva Garcia. I live in the city of Clovis, but I have lived many years in Fresno. It makes me very proud for you to make something memorial for the military. I also agree with the Councilwoman Capriol that other veterans should not be ignored. Remember, every one of them, whether they were in combat or stayed here, all of them committed for a timeframe to protect this country in their way and whatever the government ordered them to do. And it doesn't make them any less. I come from a family of veterans, twenty years, in the Air Force. My niece, my brother, twelve years in the Navy, World War II. My brother-in-law, World War II, who died from his wounds. My nephew in the Marines, who died in Vietnam. So, I truly appreciate you taking the time to honor, as Clovis does. And I appreciate the people that are at the hall, that provide such maintenance. I took my grandson there, and they spoke to him about the war, and he looked at everything. He was only five. And he came back, and we walked out of the Valor, Legion of Valor, Valor Legion, I'm sorry. I'm so nervous, that he told me, he says, Grandma, did all those men go to war? I said, all of them, every one of them. And he goes, wow. He says, wow, that's good. Maybe I'll be a soldier, too. And inside, I wanted to say, no, I want you to be one. But I honor everybody. I honor you guys for doing that. And I honor these gentlemen here as well. And anybody that's been in the military, I'm very proud to say I also come from a family of military. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other members of the public like to address council today? Right? I don't see any. All right, back up here, we have a motion and a second. The council members can still punch up, but I wanted to make some comments. I think, first comment, I'm going to talk about Councilmember Arias's passion about the veterans' district. And I'm really glad that you talked about that. Mike, and I've had conversations that have gone back for years, actually, about the creation of a Fresno Veterans Memorial District. And I'm glad to see that the conversations behind the scenes are moving forward. It's taken a while, Mike. Thank you for being a bulldog on that. And I'll be supportive of that here, of course, and also at the county of Fresno. And I'm glad that you're also connecting with the Clovis Veterans Memorial District. Now, it can, now with their support, it's not a competition. It's a fact, let's get all Fresno area and Fresno County veterans inside of a veterans' memorial district where they can participate and hold events and be proud of everything they have. So, I do agree with that, and I'll be supportive of that whenever that opportunity comes. I don't think that we should impact this wonderful idea by binding it to the passage of funds for that veterans' district, because that could take some time. Like I said, Mike first talked to me about a veterans' memorial district probably five years ago. So, those things take time, and we know how things work. And I don't want to see these two projects connected to the level that we cannot have a beautiful ribbon-cutting opening ceremony because the funding hasn't been realized for the veterans' memorial district. So, that's my thoughts on that, but it's up to the makers of the motion. I do want to thank Councilman Brettafeld, Councilmember Soria, and the mayor for all thinking and moving something forward at this facility. So, I do agree with Councilmember Arias that the memorial district and the memorial building is the fantastic place that the community needs to be aware of. It's been in existence for many decades. And I, but I don't think it's dishonoring that to have something at this location that honors veterans. And so, I'm going to be very supportive. As a matter of fact, Councilmember Brettafeld, I had a, when I saw this come on the agenda, I had a conversation with our city attorney. And I would, and I'm going to take ten thousand dollars of District Two infrastructure funds and apply it to this project. And really, we have a lot of veterans in District Two. And I've been knocking on a lot of doors lately, and I see, and I've been meeting a lot of veterans.
Thank you so much, Council President Brandell. Thank you.
So, I'm going to be very supportive of all these type of efforts and thank everybody involved. And the screen is clear, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes seven zero. All right. Congratulations. Thank you. Now, we are on to City Council, item four A.
Can I jump in on four A before you start?
Yes.
I would recommend that you also table this item like you did the ISD item, especially if council's interested in a comprehensive records retention overview and plan.
Okay. Council President, I would agree with that suggestion.
I also would agree.
Okay, I get that. But I want to provide, this item came from the clerk's office in my office, and I have no problem. But I want the clerk to be able to articulate the need because what I'm understanding is there's multiple needs in records retention and deletion, okay? And sometimes there are two, and actually, the destruction, the proper destruction of records. So, there's a lot of interest in this, but I want the clerk to kind of have this opportunity to address it, and maybe that will be helpful as that workshop gets formed. And so, Yvonne, you and I have been talking, and you've convinced me, and to the, to the level that I wanted to help you co-sponsor this, show great council support here. But could you talk about, for just a few minutes, because we are going to table the item, could you talk about the creating roles and responsibilities of a citywide records management program?
Sure. Having worked in other cities, city clerk's office, and knowing several city clerks in the city of, I mean, the state of California, the records management program is usually, resides within the city clerk's office. So, when I came here and I didn't see anything, even the resolution that approves a records retention schedule, and that resolution is two thousand eight, two, four, three, it only talks about destructions of records, but there's no ownership, there's no custodians, there's no processes, there's no procedures. And so, you know, I took it upon myself because records is my passion, similar to you, woman, with the emergency management. So, it takes a really big space in my heart about making sure that records are managed properly. So, when I saw that need, I did some surveys, and I questioned records custodians in different departments. And there was a lot of people who said they don't have the time to manage the records because they have other things to do. You know, out of all the time that I've been here, only four departments have sent records destruction requests to our department because we have to authorize that. And there's like sixteen departments in the city, so everyone is not even following the resolution that's been approved. So, this is basically to give responsibility to the city clerk's office to manage this records management program, provide training to those who need it, implement processes and procedures, and making sure that we're destroying our records appropriately. I've heard of a lot of people talking about throwing the records away and shredding them, and they haven't come to us. I'm really concerned that we're getting rid of things we shouldn't be. So, that's the reason for this.
All right. And then, I'd like to add, and we are, we've got a council majority that wants to postpone this item until a thorough workshop. So, a couple things we need to, I wasn't sure on the earlier item, if we were going to be able to get through your, our part today. But now that we're going to see that it's going to be included, then I'm going to ask that the clerk is involved in all of those meetings as well. Because, and so, to my colleagues, this, it is slightly different than the, than the item that you pulled earlier today, but it is still within the comprehensive responsibility of the clerk's office. So, our clerk has shown me the state of our records now. So, if anybody wants to know, we have records in departments all over the city, some of them unattended, okay? Recently, we had a flood at one of our main locations that put permanent records in jeopardy. So, our clerk is asking to clear all of that up. We need to We need to not only destroy the records that should be destroyed, but we need to find a better system for protecting the records that are to be held permanent. And some of them are very historical records, that'd be quite embarrassing if we lost them to another winter of tough rain like we had this year. So I'm fine with moving it forward till next month, I won't be here, but I can tell that there's a lot of interest in the records-keeping of our city, and so I'm glad for that, and so, Yvonne, you'll be included in all of those conversations and, and kind of oversee that.
Council President, I would like to have, give staff direction that no record should be destroyed until we have a council workshop, and we have clarity on who the record keeper is, and how we're gonna manage and retain records, because the focus so far has been on destruction of records versus our legal obligation to maintain records. So I want to make sure that staff is clear that any destruction of records currently taking place or planned should be put on pause until we have this council workshop, and we get clarity on the policies and procedures that we're gonna pursue.
I second that. Okay, so do we have a consensus of that direction? It seems like we have a consensus of that direction to stop, cease destroying any records until we have this opportunity, and you know, there's a lot of records that mount up, so we need to tackle this right away, then. So I'm gonna add that I think the council president and maybe the council vice president need to be included in these conversations. And so, all right, we will not be voting on that also today, so we will come, come back to the public once we have a clear pathway forward on all of our records in the city of Fresno. Now, we are going to go to unscheduled communication, and I have two cards today for, for people that would like to talk, and after these two cards are through, we have opportunity for anybody in the public that would still like to come forward for three minutes. So the first up is David Love. David, come up and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's David Love, number four, I live at 5705 East Huntington, apartment 205. I'm the first Moncene. I'm going to voice over to Sacramento, and also over to Washington DC. Today's actually Friday, the 15th, 2019. I was sitting there to impeach Paula Yang and her, because Paula Yang and her organizations, they are, they're still, they're... I voiced over to Donald Trump, and I was over to Jerry Brown, and they should, look at, because Paula Yang's organizations of Satan's, of the, of Cocon's. Right now, it's still being blocked. It's still being blocked right now. I noticed that Paula Yang's organization has scaled thousands to millions, going to billions of infants, babies, kids, children, youths, and elders, and they are the only Satan's organization of the one universe as of right now. Just be very patient. I noticed that we have time, a voice is being audited with other vocals. And Paula Yang and Donald Trump, Satan did not win, this city district number five. I'll be back to voice again.
David, your time is up this week, but we'll see you soon, thank you. All right, next is Russell Letzing. Give us your name and address, Russell, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. My name is Russell Letzinger. I'm a current resident of Fresno, been living here my whole life, 4105 North Binghamston Avenue in Fresno, 93705. Got a design proposition, I've been, I've been doing some research on, as well as, I'm kinda, I don't want to piggyback on the earlier transmission from the gentleman about the homeless population, but I know it's something that's grown rampant within our county, in our community, and in our state, so much so that at the Capitol, and at the Capitol, they're, they're making a pretty big show of the homeless population, population increasing to such a magnitude. Well, I do construction and remodeling, I've been a handyman, licensed handyman to the city of Fresno, as well as in construction and remodeling my whole life, but a friend of mine and I were speaking, and we came in to an understanding about a need possibly for the situation of the homeless situation in Fresno, and that's a shower station, a local station that would be, I was hoping to be, would be embraced by each one of the council members from each district, possibly make available a facility that will be able to have these people be able to come and take a shower. I'm talking to Social Services right now, the Department of Social Services, to see if, just as EBT is presented in as far as food stamps and cash aid, that maybe they would allot every other day a shower to the homeless that have, receiving food stamps as well. The community, I believe, would be able to benefit from this as well. It would be, it's a real integrated system where there'd be timed water, as well as timed locking mechanism on the facility, a 16-unit facility for 16 showers. It would only take up about 1,000 square foot of space, hopefully, thinking of possibly, seeing if any of that space would be able to be provided by the city of Fresno, or each individual council, district. Also, I've been, I'm really gonna run out of time here, but I'm also gonna be talking to the Department of Transportation to see if I can't get involved possibly with the rest areas throughout the country, and throughout the city, I mean, not the city so much, but the state, because we don't have any rest areas here, but to also maybe implement a shower station that would be available there, all on card lock system, there'd be no cash transfer at the facility, so that it would be, reduce the risk of being robbed and everything else, but also so that it would cut down on bodily disease, but also accidents involving people falling asleep behind the wheel. There's a lot of that going on, I'm seeing a lot of head-on collisions, and I'm thinking that with a proper facility able to accommodate a shower, sometimes makes all the difference in whether or not a person is awake and revived, and to get back on the road, and reduce the casualties then affected by these accidents. But a shower station, 16 units each one, if not more, and something that would be, I believe, very useful and very resourceful in reducing disease as well.
Thanks, Russell, and thanks for thinking about our people. Admirable.
Russell, can you meet with HB's from the mayor's office? He's our point person for the homeless initiatives, and sit down with him about this idea?
How can I meet with him?
You can just go into the mayor's office and ask for an appointment with him.
Yeah, that would be fantastic, sir. I've got, actually, I even, I even got a design, that I designed for, and it only takes up about six, less than 1,000 square feet, 16 showers, handicap accessible, 36 inches at entry, 60 inches at the back, and with the, like a rotunda-type setting with pie slices for the showers, it'd be a great thing, shampoo, and talk to the mayor's officer.
HB's, H-Spies, he works on the homeless initiative.
H-Speaks?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Russell.
Thank you for your time, sir, ma'am, all of you.
Any other members of the public like to address council in unscheduled communication? All right, I believe we're done with the agenda except for a closed session, is that correct? Oh, yeah, I skipped over that, yeah, that's right.
We can be finished if you want to be.
All right. Presentation of parking lot audit findings and council direction regarding the role and purpose of the Council Finance and Audit Committee, that's sponsored by Council President Arias and Councilmember Esparza.
Yes, you want me jumping in, to kind of give a recap? So this is, it's kind of an extension of a meeting that we had on Monday, the first meeting of 2019 of the Finance and Audit Committee. The committee consists of Chairman Brandau, the vice chair, and Councilmember Bretafeld is the third member. It was great to have it in public, it's required to be in public, because that, that's committee is subject to the Brown Act, so we cannot meet behind these doors and talk about that type of committee business, so we did it out here in the dais on Monday. We aired out, in this particular meeting, a parking audit that was released by the administration some weeks ago, which revealed a few different findings, and I'll, I'll go ahead and just recap the, the quick and dirty of it, and we can open this up a little further. So, you know, the audit found that parking services lacked, you know, procedure, appropriate procedure for monitoring our parking agreements with different entities who the city enters into agreements with, as well as the fact that parking services also lacked, or did not follow standard accounting practices, and didn't really have any appropriate way of providing financial oversight of parking revenue. And what that led to was a few different things, a few different problematic fiscal impacts. This audit covered, by the way, from July 2016 to March 2018, so a 21-month period. And so, within this 21 months, what the audit found was that we lost revenue, again, agreements with different entities, we lost money from agreements with Fresno County, Club One Casino, the SBA project, and I think even, even a few bucks from the Housing Authority. That amount totaled to $242,845 within that 21-month span. In addition to that, we, the audit found that there, because of no oversight in parking services when it comes to dismissing or reducing tickets, there were a total of 5,271 tickets dismissed over this 21-period, this 21-month period, either dismissed or reduced, with no accountability within staff as to who was necessarily reducing or dismissing these tickets, and that amount totaled to a loss of, or foregone revenue of $384,009. I averaged it out across 21-month period, that ended up being 251 reductions or dismissals per month within that 21-month period, which I thought was a very high number. And then the third portion was the process of coin collection across the meters in our city. There are four staff members who do the coin collection, who were going on the same routes every day to collect those coins, and there seemed to be no accountability in the counting process, where it was only one person counting, I'm not sure how often they did it, but they traded off, where it's just one person actually counting the revenue. And so, within a fiscal year, we were collecting about 1.37 million in coins from the meters, and the, the audits, the audit made it clear that there was very high risk exposure, just in terms of how they collected it, how it was counted, and so, even though that, that last part of the audit did not provide a, a solid number of foregone revenue or potentially lost revenue, that's an unanswered question, and so there could potentially be more money that was lost besides the $626,854 that I named off before, from the foregone revenue from the agreements, and the dismissals and reductions in tickets. So that's the, that's the quick and dirty of the, the findings, of the audits, there were recommendations after each finding that were recommended, and according to the city manager, the administration, they are in the process of implementing. I think our biggest disagreement, or at least my biggest point of contention, was not necessarily the findings, because I have to agree with the administration that it's good that we found, found these, you know, this was happening, that we're foregoing all this revenue. My biggest point of contention was just sort of the timing of the, the audit, when it began, when it was completed, and when parking services was made aware, because parking services was made aware of some of the findings prior to the release, because they have begun to implement some of those, the recommendations. So that's, that's the gist of what happened on Monday, the recording of the audio is available to the public online, just like a city council meeting is, so anybody's welcome to take a look, and take a listen at what happened on, on Monday. But that's just for my colleagues, I'm not sure if everybody has read the audit, but that is the, the summary of it. So, again, $626,854 foregone in those 21 months, in addition to the risk exposure of the 1.37 million that we collect from the coin meters.
You're good for now?
Yeah.
Council Vice President, could I? I'd like to follow his lead and make a few real short comments based on Monday's, and then we'll come, is that, are you okay with that?
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure that, the purpose of this agenda item was also to give the staff an opportunity to present the actual audit to the council, because the audit still has not been presented to the council or the findings. I know you, there was an audit committee meeting, but the rest of the council has not, and I have a few questions for the auditor and the staff related to the audit.
Okay, so I think Mike will probably take the lead on that, and we'll do that in just a second. I thank you, Councilmember Esparza and Vice Chair of the Audit Committee. As the chair, and I think, Gary, it might be helpful if you give some comments based on Monday's meeting, because the Finance and Audit Subcommittee is a Brown Act committee, as Councilmember Esparza mentioned, and we convene very rarely. In my six-and-a-half years, we convened one other time on consulting agreements, and we found, after one meeting, that it was unnecessary to proceed, and so, we, this was only the second time in my time here that we really convened that meeting. I wasn't on that Subcommittee the whole time I've been here, but, so, in my opinion, we had a full, fully-vetted meeting, I have no objection to redoing that today, by the way, Councilmember Arias, but we had a full meeting, there were an introduction of what the audit was, and when it was, and what it included, and then there were five findings in the audit that the auditors felt that needed to be addressed, and each one of those five findings had a recommendation to fix it, fix that particular finding, we're gonna hear about all of that in a minute. Some of the findings have already been implemented, or some of the recommendations have already been implemented, because they needed to be implemented, and there was no reason to hold up the implementation. I felt like it was a very thorough presentation on Tuesday, and so, I don't know if this, in my opinion, we knew at that time, Councilmember Arias and Councilmember Esparza had put it on today's agenda, so one of the objects, goals of the committee is to make a recommendation whether this comes to full council, but we'd already approved that, and myself as council president, I already knew it was on the agenda, so that took away one of the main objectives for meeting on Tuesday. We were still okay with holding the meeting and, and moving forward. I personally felt, and we're gonna hear some of this again, but I personally felt that the five findings, the five recommendations matched the five findings. I did say that it would have been nine... I did say that it would have been nice to know, even had it had to happen in closed session, about the sale of a parking structure, at the same time, we had some understanding that could have, could have been included in our information leading up to that vote. I made clear, I don't even think that it may have changed the outcome, but we could have known about that. That was one thing that I mentioned at Tuesday's meeting that I felt like I should say again today, and that had to do with the sale of the Spiral Garage. There was a portion in this audit, which you will hear about, that talked about money owed to the city by Club One Casino, who was involved in this, in the sale of that garage. I think that council could have been informed about it. Again, I don't think it would have changed the outcome, but it could have been information given to council, and that was my only takeaway that I felt was unaddressed during Tuesday's Subcommittee hearing on parking. And so, that's my only comments on that meeting. Yeah, if you have a few brief comments, and then we can call up Mike Lima and have him do a presentation.
Okay. I share a lot of the same sentiments as you, Council President. The report itself is not a good report in the sense that it highlights lots of problems within the Parking Division. I want to commend the city manager for initiating the report. This wasn't something that just, we found out about this willy-nilly. This was initiated when there was a parking manager change, and we discovered this. The discovery was ugly. I think there are a lot of problems with it, but they've already initiated recommendations that came about as a result of the audit. My biggest objection, aside from just that there were these kinds of problems that are being rectified, was the $98,000 from Club One, which I said, if we had known about that as the sale of the parking garage, for me, I would have wanted that addressed before we sold it to Club One, and I think it would have been. I still supported it and would support it, but that's something I would have liked to have known, which I, which I shared. But overall, I feel like there, a lot of the issues were openly addressed. I understand why other council members want to address this, but I do want to acknowledge the city manager for initiating this audit, and I know there are more audits taking place in the city of Fresno, which I think is a very wise use of taxpayer money. When you're auditing and seeing what our weaknesses are, where there are ways we need to improve, be better stewards of the public money and all the tax money that the people send to City Hall, that is a wise thing, that's a good use of our tax resources, and so I commend the auditors and the fine work that they've done on this and other audits, and, but I certainly understand other council members having questions. Thank you.
Council Member Capriolio wants to make a brief comment before we hear from Mike.
I was just interested in this, I had a brief conversation with the city manager, and she articulated some very good responses to some of these inquiries. I'm just asking if maybe the city manager would like to share those comments with, with the council?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Council Member Brettafield, for the kind words also. So, I'm actually very proud of this audit. I am, I was a little bit surprised at the findings as well, but when we found out that the former parking manager was retiring, we had a position open for, to fill that, and, you know, Thomas was coming on board, new parking manager, I thought it was a good opportunity to go in and really roll up our sleeves and look at that division to find out what was working, what wasn't. And of course, I was a bit surprised by some of the findings as well, but I think it's a great opportunity now for us to move forward, clean up whatever system issue that we may have, and like I said, I'm very, very proud of the audit. Thomas is already doing a great job, we're seeing revenues increase in a lot of the areas, and so, sometimes we have to get dirty to clean something up, and that's exactly what we did here. So, again, you know, thank you, and I have Mike Lima and Cretty Eggerall, our auditor, and then Thomas in the back as well, if there are any questions. I know we can speak to the Club One issue, we can speak to any of the findings that were made and any questions that you have, so do you want Mike to give a brief presentation?
I do, except Council Member Chavez wants to make a quick comment before we hear from Mike. Okay, you'll wait? All right.
And then, and then if you could just give us a little bit of direction on how you want the presentation to go, because on Monday at the Subcommittee meeting, we went through finding by finding, and then we had Thomas talk about what recommendations and changes we were making, so whatever direction you would like to give us.
It's my understanding that we want a full-
From my perspective, the rest of the colleagues besides the Audit Committee have not had any presentation on the audit findings, so you got to have that context, so however you prefer to proceed, but, you know, we have not even been told about, I, technically, I haven't even received a copy of it, because the audit was only sent to the committee itself, so a full presentation would be ideal.
I believe the audit was included in the council packet that went out last Friday.
Correct.
I, the clerk can clarify.
Correct, but the audit was completed a long time ago, not Friday.
Okay.
So, Mike, please come forward, and I think we need a, basically, a full recap, each finding and each recommendation, and how we got to where we are. It sounds like we need, we want a full presentation.
Sure, I'll be glad to do that. Good morning, council members. Mike Lima, Finance Director, Controller. It is common practice in business to perform an internal transition review of a business unit in instances where a longtime manager of that unit has given notice of an impending retirement or resignation. Such a situation occurred in the parking unit with the retirement of the former parking manager back in June of 2018. In light of both this, impending resignation and the common practice, the city manager requested a transitional review of the Parking Services Division. Leadership in the Development and Resources Management Department, where the Parking Services Division is housed, cooperated fully during this review's performance. As mentioned previously, the time period of this review covered July 1st, 2016 to March 31st, 2018. As a result of the review, the internal auditors made five findings. Number one, parking did not have standard operating procedures for marking, for monitoring parking facility usage by entities that had parking agreements with the city. Number two, Parking Services was not able to perform proper financial oversight of parking revenue. Number three, because of the first two findings, Parking Services did not collect as much revenue as it could have collected over the review period. Number four, management-level approval was not needed to dismiss parking citations. And number five, adequate internal controls were not in place for the parking meter collection process. Due to these issues identified in these findings, internal audit staff estimated that $242,845 was lost during the 21-month period of the transitional review evaluation. These findings were communicated with the new Parking Services Manager and others in DARM management. As is standard practice with all internal audits, internal audit staff will be conducting a follow-up audit in, within the next nine to 12 months to determine if the findings are being addressed. Thank you, and I'm available for any further questions.
Council Member Arias?
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of questions for, I don't know who this go to, but anybody can answer. What policy or charter bylaw governs audits?
The audits, internal audits here at the city are governed by what are called generally-accepted, GAGAs, Generally Accepted Government Auditing Standards. That's the, so that's across the United States, all internal audit units operate according to those procedures. Here at the city specifically, we also have an administrative order, AO 1-10, which spells out the internal policy, internal audit policy for the city.
So, what exactly does that policy outline?
It outlines kind of the role and function of the internal audit unit, what they, what areas they can look at, and then also kind of the audit plan, how they perform an audit is also spelled out there.
So, the, the procedure outlines what departments get audited and what the procedures for those audits?
Not which audit, which departments are audited, but how the audits are conducted. It is spelled out in AO 1-10.
So, what's the role of the city manager, yourself, or the auditor in these procedures?
Well, there's, there's different, there's different answers to the different people that you just mentioned, but let's start with city manager. The city manager can direct the internal auditors to look at a particular area. I need to back up a bit. Most internal audits are not set by direction. The key to internal audit is you want credibility with that unit, you want them to be objective, and the way you do that is you have independence. And so, they set up independence by doing what's called a risk assessment at the beginning of their cycle, and they determine which units are the most, have the most risk for potential errors that are occurring, and that's where they focus their audit findings. That being said, the city manager can direct internal audit, say, "I'm aware of something that may be going on, would you please look at this?", or "We have a transition going on, like in this case, would you please go there?" So, that, that's the city manager's role.
Correct. So, on that point, what is a risk assessment that the city conducted? What departments were identified in our current risk assessment?
All of them were rated, all the departments.
Correct.
Were rated in, as part of this risk assessment, just some were determined to be riskier than others.
What were the top three risky departments or areas that the assessment concluded should be audited?
I remember Police was at the top. Two units in Police were at the top, and I believe there was one in Public Works that was also highly, near the, with me in the top three.
So, now walk me through the role, the Controller.
So, the internal audit unit is currently housed in the Finance Department, so the positions on a day-day basis report to me, and then I am kind of overseeing their work, making sure that they're in communication with departments, kind of monitoring the status of the audits as they go along. And then, I also perform like a quality control as they're preparing the audit report, you know, grammatical errors, making sure all the numbers add up right, those kind of things.
Do you get to direct what areas get audited, like the city manager?
I have not, no. I do not direct them. Now, they have come to me with the risk assessment and said, you know, "Should we go after number one, or should we go after number two on the list? I may make recommendations, but ultimately, it is their decision."
Now, what's the role of the auditor?
The auditor is actually to go out and do the work. So, we have a principal internal auditor, and we have an internal auditor, so we have two positions in the unit. The principal internal auditor is to lead the audit, to go out and actually set up the entrance conference, set up the parameters of the audit, the scope of it, and then that individual also supervises the work of the internal auditor as well.
Does the auditor directly report to you?
The principal internal auditor does directly report to me, yes.
There's nobody in between?
Not right now, no.
Has there been?
There was previously, it was the Assistant Controller, but now it is under my purview.
Does the auditor directly report to the city manager or interact with them during audits?
They do not directly report to the city manager, as I said, they directly report to me, but they do interact with, they were interacting with the city manager. We have a standing quarterly meeting with the city manager to kind of give an overview of where we're looking at and what, what areas they are looking at at the time.
And what's the role of the city manager in those quarterly meetings? Do they get to redirect the areas that are being audited? Do they get to prioritize certain departments? What exactly would be the role of a city manager in those audit meetings?
The role is just simply to get an update on where things are at on existing audits. Our city manager has not directed that we go into a redirected staff, as you indicated, they have not done that, or she has not done that. What she has done, though, like in this case, has said, "Would you go look at this?", because it's a transitional state, and we should take a look at it.
So, it's fair to say that the city manager has initiated audits, but does not direct them or redirect the audits once they begin?
I think that's a fair, a fair characterization.
Would have been an accurate characterization?
I do believe it is an accurate characterization.
What's the role of other executive staff in the development of the audits? When an audit is completed, my, and let me preface that, when a draft audit by the auditor is complete, what happens then?
Well, when a draft is done, we, audit procedures are pretty straightforward. You send it to the department, and I should also indicate, you're always communicating throughout the audit, "Hey, we're finding this, we're finding that", but you put it into a findings report, that's really what the report is, it's a list of the findings. When it's given to the department, the department has usually two to three weeks to respond. Those are the management responses that you see in the audit report, they become part of that audit report, and so we make sure that they are aware of them, they have a chance to respond, and then the report can be finalized after that time.
When you say department, is it just the department head of the area that you're auditing, or is it assistant city managers and other executive staff? Who gets a copy of the audit findings and has an opportunity to respond?
The department director, and in this case, if you're talking the parking audit, the parking manager also got a copy of it to be able to respond to the findings.
What about the assistant city manager over these departments?
I do not recall the assistant city manager getting a copy of this before.
What about the mayor's office or the city manager? What I need to understand is, once you have an audit finding, your responsibility, according to audit standard procedures, is to send it to the department heads or management, give them an opportunity to respond, correct?
Correct.
So, who gets that audit finding exactly? Standard procedure, who gets that? Is it the mayor's office, the city manager's office? Is it 10 people? Is it one department head and their number two? What is your protocol?
Well, as I've indicated, the department head and the, in this case, the division manager got the audit report, the draft audit report. We had briefed the city manager and the assistant city manager on the findings, but they had not actually seen an audit report at that time.
And is that your standard protocol?
That is our standard protocol.
Okay, so it's fair to say that the only people that would see a draft audit report is the department head and their manager?
Well, I don't want to generalize, it depends on the audit.
Council Member Arias? Audits are supposed to be standardized, so I, are they not?
Well, it depends.
The protocol?
It depends if the city manager is the one that is actually the person who is the one, who's the responsible party in this. For instance, we had an audit of Granite Park, that was a contract that city, that is of city nature, the city manager's office was the manager of that contract, so the city manager got the draft audit.
It wouldn't be the Parks Director, though, because the contract is within the Parks Department?
No, it was not in the Parks Department.
Why not?
Good question, I'm not, I, I don't know for, why that isn't in there.
Okay, thank you. My other questions, how long does it usually take you to go from a draft audit to a final audit, and who makes that determination?
It can all depend. So, for instance, if, if the management comes back and says, you know, "You got it wrong, here's what's really going on", then we have a responsibility to go in and look at it again and evaluate and see, okay, is, do we have additional information that we need to update our findings? So, if, if they agree, it can be, it could be finalized fairly quickly, and by quickly I mean still about, it takes three weeks or so. If not, it could take even longer, so there's no cookie cutter, it's-
In the case of the parking audit, when was the final draft ready and complete?
January 3rd.
January 3rd.
2019.
There is no other final drafts being circulated?
No. The last draft was January 3rd, 2019.
I want to point out that, too, that's nine months after it was initiated, which I think, based upon all the work that was done and the other audits that the auditors were juggling and everything else that was going on, that was actually pretty remarkable in terms, in terms of-
Thank you, city manager, but I have the floor. What procedures do you follow when you're referring audits to a third party?
Well, we usually go out to RFP, and we solicit, we spell out the scope of what we look to audit, and we ask for bids, and then, so basically, we bid job by job, is what I'm trying to say. We go out and solicit, and then we get bids, and we evaluate, and then we make a selection.
What I'm trying to understand is, when you have an audit that's final or in draft form, and that gets referred to a third-party outside agency, for whatever reason, I understand one of the recent audits got referred to a district attorney's office. What is that process? Who determines when an audit finding, whether it's in draft form or in final form, gets referred out to a third-party agency?
In the case of Granite Park-
Can I ask a question? Doug, is this, is this relevant right now, based upon the agenda item?
We're talking about audits.
Talking about the parking audit is what's on the agenda.
Well, there's a broader discussion regarding the role and purpose of the Council Finance and Audit Committee also.
Yes, thank you, legal counsel. So, can you walk me through- So, can you walk me through, through what's your process for determining when an audit is referred to a third-party agency?
I want to ask the city attorney specifically, because the question was asked about Granite Park.
So, take Granite Park out of this. In a normal audit situation, who makes a decision whether to refer to a third-party agency?
It would be the principal internal auditor would make that determination based if they felt they had an ethical responsibility to disclose that audit to an outside agency.
Thank you. What other audits are you working on?
Currently, right now, we are working on a police audit, a police payroll audit. That is right now at the management response stage, so it is with the police department. And we are waiting for management responses from them. And we have just started an audit of the public works engineering services division. And that's just commenced. We just have begun field work on that.
When do you anticipate these would be, in a final draft form or in a final form?
I couldn't tell you. I really couldn't at this point. It all depends on when, again, like I said, depends on the police one, it depends on the management responses, and whether we need to go back in and do additional work, or, and on the public works one, it could be, it depends on the field work and what we find.
So, the police audit can take six, eight more months before it's finalized?
I won't, I can't give you a timeframe right now.
How long have you been working on that audit?
Hmm, what, four months? Four months? Yeah, I mean, it isn't like we work on just that audit at one time. We're working on multiple ones.
Who's speaking on the audience?
That's Kriti Agarwal, our principal internal auditor.
Can you come to the podium and say your name for the record?
Kriti Agarwal, principal internal auditor.
Thank you, appreciate it. I do have some questions on the parking audit. It references that it was performed in a limited scope transitional review of the parking But, you could not determine a final, the final scope because of the lack of procedures in place. Can you tell me what it means specifically? It says, "Lack of adequate accounting practices and financial documents did allow you to conduct testing." What does that mean?
It means that, that the documents weren't available for us to assess accordingly.
So, we don't know how bad or how much worse or better the loss is?
We don't know if it could be more, it could be less. That's, I mean, we, the documents we were given, that's how we were, that's, that's what we were able to determine. The amount was $242,000.
And the audit says that it was performed as a directive of city manager to do a limited scope transitional review of the parking services. What does that mean? Does that mean that you didn't audit the whole department, but just a portion of it?
It means that we selected a, the city manager's office didn't direct us for the scope period. We determined the scope period. It means that we didn't, I mean, the scope, however long the parking department has been here for the city of Fresno, that's a full scope audit. I mean, that would still be going on at this point. We wouldn't have been, we wouldn't have been able to conclude it until God knows when.
Okay. What does it mean that internal controls to be deficient to nonexistent? What does that mean in layman's terms?
In layman's terms, it means that proper policies and procedures aren't in place to control, to monitor the controls within the parking division.
And who's responsible for setting those controls?
Management.
And then, the audit also says that you're going to do a review in 12 months.
We'll conduct a follow-up review within nine to 12 months of when this report was finalized, meaning it was finalized, I guess, it was issued, when, we say finalized when it was actually issued, so I believe it was issued at the end of February. So, within, by February of next year, we'll, we will start a new, we can start a new review. We'll go out there and start a new review.
So, it states specifically that you'll do it 12 months after the date of the report.
The date, when it was released, yeah.
So, I know some audit reviews are done six months after, nine months after. What do you use to determine how many months after?
Well, they have quite a number of findings, so we want to be able to give them enough time to actually implement them and actually have results in place so that we can go ahead and look at them, have enough transactions and samples to look at when we go back to do field work.
So, basically, if the audits are so severe, you want to give them more time to be able to rectify them before you go back?
We want to give them sufficient time, yeah.
Okay. Now, one other question, this is for the city manager or the controller. It was indicated in your comments that you guys determined that the parking audit was done because there was a transition in leadership. But, there was also a transition in leadership in the public utilities department. Was an audit done of that department in any way?
You're talking about with the director of the PO?
Correct. A recent transition of the director of public utilities?
No, there was no audit done there.
Okay. What about the parks department? Will there be an audit of the parks department?
There are items that I have brought up to the auditors that eventually I would like, when their capacity allows, things to be looked at in the parks department, yes.
Now, we know the chief is retiring October 16th. Will there be a broader scope audit of the police department, or are we just limiting the audit to the area that you guys are looking at now? That's a pretty massive department, and it's identified on the top tier of your risk assessment.
So, we are looking at the police department right now. I think Mike mentioned that we're doing a timesheet audit right now. We could potentially look at other areas within the police department. At this point right now, it's not on the radar. I'll go back and, we're going to conduct another annual risk assessment, and depending upon what the priorities are, we may or may not look at it after he retires.
But, it seems to me that the standard you guys have set for determining audits is transition of leadership.
No, that's not the standard. The standard is a risk-based audit approach, right? So, and unfortunately, with the way that the risk assessment was, how the departments responded last year, it was, the responses seemed to have been inflated, so...
What does that mean?
It means that some areas were presented to be lower than they actually should have been. And since parking, parking was rated quite low on the risk assessment. But, according to, as we've seen in the findings report, it probably should not have been, right?
So, what you're saying is that department heads understated the risk that their departments were posing to the city?
No, what I'm saying is, I don't think they actually fully understood what a risk assessment process was. So, recently, we met with actual department heads and gave them a training on the risk assessment process, as well as an overview of what internal audit actually does. So, I think it gives them a better idea on how to better respond to the risk assessment survey when we go back out again.
Well, it seems to me that the highest-risk department we have as a city is the police department. And your scope in the audit right now is dealing with timesheets. And the leadership transitioning of our chief is, were on notice. So, why wouldn't that be on the top of your list to broaden the scope?
And it may, and it may or may not be. I'm not saying it won't be.
You know, and I have to say, my office does a very good job in making sure the auditors are independent, just like I do John Gliata as our office of independent review. They need to act independently and make decisions on their own based upon the findings of the risk assessment. So, I do not go in and direct them with their work product.
But, the city manager, you just indicated that the parking audit was directed by you.
I didn't say they're, all of their work product. I, there was one audit so far that I've asked them to conduct. And it was, and it was because, and because of the transition with Dell leaving, Thomas coming onboard, but also, there were red flags that I saw in the parking division, having worked in the city manager's office for about five years prior to taking the role of city manager. And so, that was, as soon as we had the audit team onboard, I wanted to make sure they looked at the parking division. It was perfect timing because of the transition in staff. Having said that, all of the other audits that they're working on during my quarterly meetings with them, they tell me that they're doing based upon their own assessment of the information that comes back from the departments as part of their annual review. They're about ready to conduct, or I think you just did, another risk assessment?
We're going to, yes.
Right, and they're going to let me know at that point what audits they're doing. I don't direct the product, the scope of the audits, et cetera.
And also, we're open to input. So, if you all have an area that you feel is important to be audited, I'm happy to hear it out. Doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be at the top of the list, because as I mentioned, it's a risk-based approach. So, if something has a higher priority based upon my professional judgment, I'm going to go ahead and audit them. But, I'm happy to hear you all out.
I appreciate that, and what I want to be very thoughtful of is, what is our policy? What are our procedures? What is the standard for auditing? It seems to me that the standard is your risk assessment. If that's the case, why aren't those areas being audited? If the standard by the city manager is transition and leadership, if that's the case, why aren't those being applied? So, I appreciate the fact that you want feedback, and I do think we're going to get to that point with the audit committee. Thank you again for your time.
Thanks.
And just calling from my perspective, I think if we're going to have an audit committee, we ought to have a very clear definition for the role of the audit committee. I know in my conversations with the city manager, it's still somewhat unclear what the role of the audit committee is. That's why the agenda item is before us. From my perspective, if the city manager's allowed to initiate audits based on her professional pedigree and understanding of some of the challenges in our city, then the council audit committee should also have a role in being able to identify areas of audits. As a council, we essentially have to cut the checks every council meeting for settlements, for lawsuits, for any indication of risk. So, we have a pretty good understanding of what areas have the highest risk. I would also like the audit committee to have access to draft findings so that they are familiar with what's taking place. Of course, they should not be allowed to change any of the findings, like management shouldn't be allowed to change any of the findings, but they should be aware of them far, far ahead of time. And secondly, I would want them to have a way to lift audit findings to the full council, because these areas, not all of us are going to serve on the audit committee. Parking primarily has a huge impact in my district. I'm not on the audit committee. Reading a report and meeting with staff isn't sufficient for me to understand the status of the parking situation. So, I'm more interested in a policy, procedure, protocol that everybody understands our lanes and that we're sticking to our lanes, and that the auditors have a level of independence from management and from the council to bring forward any inefficiencies and unnecessary risk that's before the city. Thank you.
Thank you, President Brandell. First of all, I want to thank the city manager for being proactive on this audit. Appreciate the work. I'm comfortable with the findings and, more importantly, the corrections that we're making. I'm more interested in the policy of what this finance and audit committee, committee will be guided by. And so, I think what would help the conversation, to make sure that, you know, we all reach that comfort level as a body, if each council member could send their recommendations to legal counsel, so he could vet them through, through those legal parameters. Is that, would that be the process to go through, Doug, so that we can each individually send you that, what we would like to see in the role and responsibilities of the audit committee?
That's one way to do it, yes.
That's, that's my suggestion. I think that, you know, we'll end up with something that we're all comfortable with and specifically delineating what that looks like for this body. And, and then bring it back for consideration, and then we'll, you know, make sausage, so to speak.
I would like staff to be engaged in that conversation with whatever you send to the attorney's office, because first and foremost, we need to make sure that we upheld, uphold the integrity of the audit. And, and if all of a sudden, draft findings, I don't even see, the police audit that they mentioned earlier, I have not seen draft findings. It's in the police department right now. And, and I should not see draft findings on that one. And so, for the audit subcommittee, if that's going to be one of the recommendations, to me, that jeopardizes the integrity of the audit. So, we absolutely need to make sure that whatever you send to Doug is going to follow the, what is it, gagas? Thank you. Parameters and requirements to make sure that that audit can stand on its own without influence from anybody else.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, Doug, and that's one of the reasons why I think it would be helpful to send them to Doug, our legal counsel, because he knows what, what is allowed by city charter, by law, by professional ethical requirements and all that. So, that's really the intent of this process, to get to a place where, as a majority, we will speak and say, "This is what we're comfortable with," and then vet that through the legal parameters and restrictions that we have.
Right. From what I understand, we're initially talking about changes to the resolution that created the council and audit, the finance and audit committee, not so much particular audits.
That's correct. And, and I think what would be helpful, Doug, is if you could send a copy of the original, what we have on the books now, because I think that'll be a good starting point for our colleagues, to add, subtract, modify, and then shoot them back to you. I think that'll be helpful in this conversation.
Will do.
Thank you.
Any other council members?
No, just, I think, you know, we vetted through, I think, pretty thoroughly between today. Thank you to the principal auditor for withstanding the cross-examinations by myself and council member Arius. I think, I think we're on the right track as far as, you know, looking at, given the gravity of this particular situation, right, and, and all that's going on around audits in the city of Fresno, I think this is the right move for us as a council to really take a look at our, our role in, in the process.
Okay. Any other council members?
I would just like to thank everyone for their participation in this process. We are trying to understand how independent audits in this city, strong mayor, former government should and could operate. And I just want to point out that although the draft audits are going to city management, I mean, to department management, they all report to the city manager. So, to say that the city manager doesn't have access to draft findings, I think would be disingenuous. So, our interest is to make sure that these audits are done independently, are not in any way influenced by management or by the council, but that we all get the same information and that staff is allowed the time to make corrections, because ultimately, this council is the one that has to cut the liability checks when it doesn't work.
Any other council members? So, there's not a voting item today? It's more of a direction. And the direction is, like Councilman Chavez said, we're going to submit recommendations to the city attorney as well, and the city administration's also going to have a voice in that process. And then, we could come back and visit that once Doug has been able to collect all those and vet those ideas legally, and then have a thorough understanding of where the finance and audit committee goes. My only comment is going to be, well, I have two comments. One is to also give accolades to the finance, to the finance department, the audit department, and the city manager's department when Wilma discovered, I mean, she mentioned, there's two reasons. There's the part about transitioning, but I really think the underlying reason is, she's very connected to parking, and she saw some red flags. And those red flags that she saw were bore out in the, in the audit. And I, I think, now having heard about the audit twice, I think the audit has been done very professionally. My only worry going forward is the insertion of council, because I do believe, a lot of times, what you'll see is, it might be, it might be an undertone of politics involved. And I, and I agree with the city manager that when it comes to audits, we need to let these professionals do their job, and then, we have every opportunity to, to make a final decision after they've done a very clean and pure job delivering us the information. And so, I'm not worried, I might not even be here when we see these recommendations that Doug comes back with, but if, if they include council interjecting themselves in an early or even intermittent stage of the audit, I've got extreme worries about that. I don't have a problem with information being given. So, those are my only concerns moving forward. And I think, oh, Councilmember Soraya, you also punched up.
Yeah, so I just punched up because I was going to ask a couple of questions. So, as part of the findings, and I don't know who wants to answer this question, obviously there was findings that there was dollars that we didn't collect it. So, I just want to know for the record, how does that, do we go back to those individuals since we know about how much? Do we go back to those individuals to ask for those dollars, or what happens in the instance where we know the amount that...
Thomas is coming down to speak to that. He's already made strides with the money that the county owes us. In the instance of Club One, the contract is actually, the language in the contract is actually ambiguous. And so, we're, we're working with Club One to rectify that. So, moving forward, we have a clear path. Thomas, do you want to talk about county revenues in particular, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the clients referenced in the audit report... So the clients referenced in the audit report where we hadn't yet collected from them, we've done those back collections, and so far, we've collected $185,000 from the county of Fresno. We've got another $74,000 that we're in dispute with them and continuing those conversations. All of the other clients have been brought up to current payment within the January time period.
Who are those, for the record?
Fresno County Superintendent of Schools, Housing Authority, Judicial Council, which is the courts, SBA, and then Radisson and Club One at their contract negotiated rates. All those folks are up to their current payments, and any back amounts do have been paid. The other piece with that is, the audit describes is, we've built and documented a business process for tracking that payments are occurring on a monthly basis, levying late fees as required per their agreements, and so on.
Does that include late fees for this, or they don't?
Yeah, not for the past, these past payments that were a component of the audit, we didn't apply late fees, but moving forward, since we notified the clients of all of the process changes.
Is it because it was our mistake?
Yeah, because it was, it was our mistake in terms of the, the, the level of communication we were having with the clients. It wasn't fair on our part to, in my professional opinion, from how I encountered the business processes when I arrived.
So up to date, we've collected $185,000?
From Fresno, that's just the Fresno County number.
Okay, and from the other, so what's the total amount that has been collected?
I don't have that number with me, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there anything else that needs to be collected, or are we pretty much?
Though, for the contracted amounts, everybody else is up to date, other than that, the discrepancy with the Club One language that the city manager was referencing.
So is that going to get resolved, or are you guys still trying to negotiate?
We're going to be reaching out with city attorney and then working with the city manager's office in Club One. The challenge with that one is the language in that agreement interchangeably refers to Club One having access to 100 spaces, and then validating vehicles over those 100 spaces. But Club One may have, let's say, 140 total vehicles come through during the day, but they may or may not have more than 100 at any given time, and our access control hardware in the underground garage is so aged that we're unable to do that kind of tracking. So we're working with SP Plus to build a project plan and proposal to bring forward on refreshing that hardware, so that we can have accurate revenue controls for both Club One and Radisson.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for that information.
Not a problem.
And Councilmember Soria, I want to remind, remind us that the 626, 854 that was foregone revenue during the 21-month period was just that, only 21 months. And so while we may seek to rectify, you know, the losses from this, from this timeframe, you know, we really, because we cannot conduct, it's not plausible to conduct a full, full scope, it's unlikely we'll ever recuperate all the revenues lost.
So there was a lot more money lost?
But, I mean...
Yeah, because this is just the small window that we audited.
Everything else held constant. I asked this question at the, the committee meeting. They were unable to, you know, give an educated guess or estimate, because the full scope is just, I mean, enormous. But, you know, everything else held constant, yeah, you know, we would be losing this amount roughly every 21 months, if, if everything else held constant, the agreements and, and everything.
And I'm assuming those dollars are going, do they go back to the parking division, or do they go just to general fund? General fund dollars?
Right.
Yeah, they're, they're general fund dollars, so they go to the general fund pool. And, and I think, again, to Councilmember Esparza's comments, it is an unknown outside of that 21-month period, because having come in as an outsider as well, I can't speak to their periodic reconciliations, which I did see occurring for the past payments, but it was not a monthly process where we were on top of these revenue collections in the past.
Great, thank you.
Just one last question to the auditor. It was referenced that when the auditor believes that there's an ethical obligation to report to a third party, you do so, and that's your decision, right, or the controllers?
It's an ethical decision. I mean, it's based upon, I'm a CIA certified internal auditor, so based upon the standards that I have to abide by, it's, if...
Your decision?
More, yeah, I guess you could say that, yeah.
Okay. In the case of the, of police audit, if we're to find anything that's not, that you would have an ethical obligation to report, who would, who would you report that to?
It would be first to the city attorney's office, and then it would, it would be up to him to decide where to go next.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the screen is clear. We didn't take a vote. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? All right, we did give direction that's going to be adhered to from here on out. We're going to reconvene at 1:30 for closed session.
We're going to convene in the closed session, so I need to announce now. Yes, in closed session, we'll have performance evaluations and labor negotiations concerning both city attorney and city clerk. I would not expect return in public for an announcement.